We will call the meeting to order. We are at April 2nd, 2024, and it is 6:00 PM. Will you join me in a moment of silence? Now will you join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to welcome everyone who has joined us today. We are always happy to have you with us. We follow a written agenda, which is available on our website at salisburync.gov/Agendas. City Council meetings are broadcast on WSRG, our local government TV station, which is also available on Spectrum Channel 16 and Hotwire Channel 394. Meeting air times are posted on the station's website, wsrgtv.com. You can also watch current and past city council meetings on demand from the city's website, Now we're at number four, adoption of the agenda. Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda as presented? We have a motion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Now at number five, council to recognize North Carolina Main Street Award winners. And our presenter this evening is Downtown Development Director Seda Troutman. Welcome, Seda. And one of our awardees.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for allowing me a moment to acknowledge some very exciting awards that Salisbury has been the recipient of. This past month, at the 2024 North Carolina Main Street Conference, Salisbury received two awards. The first, the award winner could not be here with us tonight, but it's Josh Barnhart for the Salisbury Building. He received an Award of Merit for the Best Adaptive Reuse Project. And this project was completed by Josh, as well as Bogle Farm Architecture and Vertex Construction. And this is actually Josh's second Main Street Award, the first being Lofson Innis and Barnhart Jewelers. So he continues to produce great products for Salisbury. Tanyan was able to be here with us tonight. And this year, Tanyan was awarded, excuse me, the title of Main Street Champion for Salisbury. Main Street Champions have to make a significant, and that is in all caps in our nomination forms, they have to be significant impact in our downtowns. And the honor only goes to individuals who have gone above and beyond their volunteer role or duties. So if you'll indulge me for a moment, I want to read the nomination. It's very short, but wanted to share some of the highlights of what Tanyan has done to contribute to our community. So Tanyan has been invaluable to the community since she opened a store in downtown Salisbury in 2018. She owns House of Tea Grace Wellness and Boutique and Fit for a Queen, two small businesses in our downtown. And she serves on the Downtown Salisbury, Inc. Board, the Promotions Committee, the Economic Vitality Committee, and the Design Committee. That's basically all of them. She also saw an influx of new, younger business owners in downtown Salisbury and took it upon herself to start a mentoring system in which she supports these owners to guide them as they learn and make business decisions. To be able to maximize that impact, Tanyan approached DSI about chairing an event series called Learn, Connect, and Grow Mixers. So every other month, Tanyan spearheads mixers that are open to all stakeholders and allow time to relax and talk about various small business impacts. Tanyan is always the first to volunteer for working an event, serving on a committee, supporting an innovative idea, or mentoring a new business owner. And as a breast cancer survivor and mother too, and this is the part where the 800-person audience got very quiet, and then you heard the audible kind of gaffes across the room. She is a mother to 10 children. It would be enough for Tanyan to run her two businesses and go home. But between all those things, she does whatever it takes to spend countless hours making sure the downtown Salisbury community is getting more vibrant every day. So Tanyan received both this lovely medal and her plaque, Award of Certificate, and certainly deserves much more than than just this. She has our gratitude, and I know she has everyone else's for all she does to make our downtown great. So, thank you.
Thank you so much. We are so proud of you. And, you know, maybe we should go around to this side of the dais, and we want to have our picture made with you.
Here, Tanyan, do you want to hold your award while you get your picture?
Oh, thank you.
I did not prep Tanyan for that part.
Well, first I'd like to say thank you so much. I have really enjoyed being a part of this Salisbury community. We do not live here yet. We're actually residents of Arden County, but we love Rowan County. And we're looking for a home here because we've fallen in love with it. We have one of the greatest mayors and city council members that I believe that a county government could ask for. And I'm so proud to, you know, to stand beside these great men and women, especially, you know, Tamra. I'm going to kind of say a little bit, she's always been so welcoming. And, you know, for this to be the mayor, Mayor Alexander, for her to be the mayor, she goes out of her way to just speak and say hello. And that made me feel comfortable doing what I do. And I'm just grateful, and I just want to say thanks to all of you. Thank you for recognizing me, and there's more to come.
And if I could, Council, just since we're up here talking about downtown things, I do, as Tanyan said, there's more to come. I have a plug for a couple of things happening in downtown this weekend. We have Touch a Truck put on by Parks and Rec this Saturday, April 6th, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM. We do have a sensory-friendly session for the first 30 minutes, so there will be no sirens, lights, horns, all of that, to make it more accessible for for all children or adults who want to come see some of the trucks. And then Sounds of Salisbury Concert will be this Sunday at 3:00 PM at Bell Tower Green. So thank you for allowing me some time to celebrate the great things happening in downtown.
Thank you, Seda. You can bring us news like that every week.
Perfect.
Thank you. So now we move on to number six. Mayor to proclaim the following observances. Autism Acceptance Month, April 2024. Child Abuse Awareness Month, April 2024. Sybatan Awareness Month, April 2024. Fair Housing Month, April 2024. Safe Digging Month, April 2024. Sexual Assault Awareness Month, April 2024. And Week of the Young Child, April 6th through 12th, 2024. We're excited to celebrate each one of those events. Council to consider the consent agenda, which has been sent to all council members. Unless there is a request to remove one, I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Okay, we have a motion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And now we are at council to receive public comment. Connie?
Mayor, our first speaker is Ms. DeeDee Wright.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you, DeeDee.
Mayor, our second speaker is Mr. Clyde.
Mr. Clyde, welcome.
Thank you very much, Clyde. I live across the street. This is about the stormwater fees that will be going up 11% according to our city manager. It went up 4% last year. We don't know why, it needs to be three times more this year. But a lot of you probably don't even see your water bill. Most people don't. And they don't know that these fees are on your bill. You probably don't even see your bill. A lot of people do. And I have three words for you. The first word is the difference between a fee and a tax. A fee originally meant had to do with cattle and land. A tax is something, a fee, you receive something for it. Please show me what we get from the stormwater fee. I know we have employees, I see their truck going out to lunch, but I don't see the stormwater people. They don't answer the phone. I have waited 20 years for them to come to my land and see the water that comes onto my property from the park on the corner. There's supposedly impervious concrete. I have no concrete on my property, none. But the second word is arbitrary. Should a golf course pay the same amount as the Walmart parking lot for stormwater fees? These fees are arbitrary. Does a person who lives in the plaza pay? They don't have a roof, they don't have gutters on the street, they don't own land. And it's arbitrary at best, and we need to look at this. If you own apartment houses, you pay a fee, but do you pass it on to the tenant? And that shouldn't be, it should be the property owner who should be paying the fees or a tax. I've suggested to Michael Hannah that maybe it could go through the county, and he agreed that like the vehicle tax and some of those, the animal control, why can't the county take care of the stormwater and it be billed back? We're spending more money collecting penny-any, $3, $4 a month from, a lot of the lots are empty lots, and they have to bill them. Did you know that the bills come from High Point and you mail your bill to Atlanta? But yet we have a $2.5 million service, customer service center that four people work in that building, only four, and they don't answer the phone. You try to get them to answer the phone. The last word I'll tell you is fair. It's just not fair to tax all these people. And I don't know why we pay salaries of these people out of the, out of the tax. The fee that we put on the water bill should not go to public works people. It has nothing to do with water. But that's a different department, but we are doing it. At one point, we know, John Softly admitted, we were paying fiber out of the water bills. We make a lot of money, and I'd like to thank Mr. Beamer. We love water. Thank you, not bottled water.
Mayor, we have no ready speakers.
Thank you, thank you. So we will close public comment and move on to night number nine. Council to consider the installation of an arch at the Patriots Flag Concourse at City Park in partnership with the Salisbury Rotary Club and to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to accept the ownership of the installation for maintenance upon completion of the project. Our presenter this evening is landscape architect Stephen Brown. Welcome, Stephen.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander and the council. Parks and Recreation Advisory Board voted unanimously to bring this presentation for the Arch of Freedom project to present it to council. Here's an overview of the proposed arch, proposed site for the arch. You can see the Patriots Flag Concourse on the corner of North Jackson and West Miller. The proposed arch site is above the concourse off of West Miller Street. I also propose some walk repair at the art wall that is parallel to North Jackson. The willow oak's root system is lifting the walk and making the surface uneven. Here are two views of the proposed site for the arch. The picture on the left is the view from West Miller Street, looking into the site. The picture to the right is the view from the lawn at the Patriots Flag Concourse, looking toward Miller. I also propose to move the existing walk closer to the Flag Concourse once the arch is constructed and has completed and is completed. This will protect the willow oak's root system from damage during the construction process. And you can see the oak in the upper right-hand corner of the left picture. It's just above the sidewalk there. This is designed for the Arch of Freedom. On the left side of the design, you can see the elevation looking into either into the arch. The elevation with the bell is what you'll see from West Miller Street, and it'll be, it'll repeat on the opposite side, looking at it from the lawn of the concourse. The cutouts and the brickwork show the blocks behind the brick exterior. Again, here's the overview of the Flag Concourse, and I propose that the flag's lighting system be renovated as part of the arch's building project. The in-ground lighting has been renovated a number of times. Each time, water intrusion has caused the system problems. With that, I propose that, let's see, I propose as a part of the arch's construction, we put in two pole lights similar to the lights at Bell Tower Green. The poles will go at the corners of the existing plant bed. You can see that at the upper and lower picture there that I've got at West Miller and South Jackson. I took two different views. The lights, let's see here, the lighting fixtures will downlight the corner, the planting beds, and the monuments. And they will have two floodlights on each pole. The inner floodlights will light, illuminate the American and POW flags. And the outer floodlight on each of the poles will illuminate the three branches of military flags on each side of the American flag. City responsibilities will design and do project management. The city will provide the property for the arch at the Patriots Flag Concourse, and the city will provide maintenance once the project is complete. Salisbury Rotary's responsibility is to raise funds, pick a contractor to manage the installation, build the arch, move and repair the walk, and install lighting, pay for materials and labor to install, and once complete, turn it over to the city. Any questions?
Any questions from council?
I'd like to make a comment.
Okay.
First of all, this process began three or four years ago with Reed Leonard. And about, oh, five or six weeks before he passed away, I was visiting him, and he said to his daughter Beverly, who's sitting out there, says, would you get me that folder? She got the folder out, and he showed it to me, which was the first I'd heard of it. And he said to talk to Stephen Brown, who had, rather than pencil drawings, but real drawings which are here. And so this was in honor of, I mean, we, the Rotary Club wanted to do this to honor Reed, who died in November. One of the issues that came up is, of course, the issue we trip over is naming things in Salisbury. And his family made it clear to me that they didn't want this named after him. And so that is not an issue. It was thought to be an issue originally because everybody's thinking, how can we honor him and deal with the existing ordinances that we have? But the family said, no, he just wanted this done. And so this is a tribute to Reed Leonard.
Yes, sir. From my understanding, for the community understanding, that the cost to install this is not a burden to the city, it's going to be on Rotary, is that correct? So there's zero cost to the city after it's been built?
Taylor, I might add, I forgot to mention that Rotary's raised some funds. And a lot of the product and labor is being provided by Taylor Clay Products. And Chris Bradshaw, who I see out there in the audience, is going to be our contractor. He's done this before, been there, done that, and does a great job, and so.
Well, he and I have worked on many projects in the past as well, so I think we'll be a good team.
I think so, so thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hey, Jim?
Yes, Mayor, members of council, I just want to recognize and thank Mr. Brown. He's put a lot of work into the design and coordination with Reed and with members of Rotary and Reed's family. And Stephen, you've done a great job on this, and we look forward to this project becoming reality. But thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if there are no further comments or questions, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the installation, excuse me, of an arch at the Patriots Flag Concourse at City Park in partnership with Salisbury Rotary Club and to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement to accept ownership of the installation for maintenance upon completion of the project.
And we have a motion, all those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Stephen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I would just like to thank the Leonard family, the Rotary, and all the hard work that Stephen's put into this as well. It's good, this is really good.
Really good for our community, thank you. So now we are at number 10. Council to consider a 3% increase to health insurance premiums for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024, for employees and the city. Our presenter this evening is Finance Director Wade Virtus. Welcome, Wade.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Last council meeting, I gave you a pretty detailed presentation of where our health insurance fund is and a recommendation for a 3% increase. I do want to go back and, and we'll discuss a couple of things briefly, but this is, this hopefully will be very quick. We gave an overview last time that the city did not We gave an overview last time that the city did not increase rates for employees or for the city in seven years, which is very, very good. I told you that our consultant, Mark III, did some benchmarking for us, found out that our policy itself is very competitive compared with other municipalities around us. But one thing they did find with our family premiums were high on the employee side. We do offer two plan options for employees. One, it has a zero-cost option if the employee is only covering himself. We gave you this list last time, of wellness programs that help reduce our claims. These are things that we're doing in-house to keep our employees healthy and therefore help out our healthcare fund. We did have specific questions about mental health. So I did add this slide. It talks a little bit about what we're doing to help our employees' mental health. We, our employee assistance program offers 12 free mental health sessions per incident for employees. Blue Cross Blue Shield, we do have through our regular policy, some mental health initiatives. We have a separate vendor when conditions are critical, and they provide services mainly for our police and fire department. And we're reviewing our firefighters' annual physical and gathering information about cancer screening and about other items that we need to be on the lookout for. So this is just a little summary about what we're doing on the mental health side. As we said last time, our cash balances in the healthcare fund are starting to trend downward as our fund balance and our expenses are starting to trend upward a little bit, pushing five and a half million dollars. So while our healthcare fund is still strong, we want to take action and initiatives to keep it strong so that we, a couple of years from now, we don't have to have a 10% increase. We want to do this in a planned incremental fashion. We showed you this slide last time. It talks about impact on employees. You can see, based on the recommendations, the largest increase would be for, under the employee, the buy-up plan for employee spouse would see an increase of $183 per month. Now, we also are recommending that we change the way we calculate our employee family premiums, on the employee side especially, just by adding employee spouse plus employee children, because that tends to make sense. And you can see by doing that, we're actually reducing premiums for those with employee family coverage. And that, again, is what our consultant pointed out to us seems to be on the high side. So, but as you can see, the impact on employees is not huge. So just wanted to show you that. The impact on the budget is $131,000 total, of which $100,000 will come from the general fund. We are not recommending a general fund tax hike, but if we did, it would be the equivalent of about a quarter of 1%. So it comes to you with a recommendation for you to approve a 3% increase in health insurance premiums for both the city and the employees beginning July 1, 2024.
Any questions from council? If not...
Wade, you did say, and I think it was an annual number you mentioned, that wasn't 180 something?
Say that again.
Your slide before that showed the breakdown.
That one?
Per the employee. So the far right column?
Yes.
Those are all annual. Those aren't...
Those are all annual costs. Yes, ma'am. The column before that shows the per payroll increase. So for the, an employee with employee spouse coverage in the buy-up plan, will pay an additional $7.05 per payroll, which comes out to 183 for the year.
Gotcha.
And the last time we had an increase, you said, was seven years ago? When was the last time we had an increase?
Seven years ago. We have not had an increase for seven years. So our fund has been healthy. We're starting to see some increase in cost and claims, some larger claims, which has started to make our cash balance and our fund balance kind of teeter down a little bit. So we're not overly alarmed about where the healthcare fund is, but we do think it's time to take a step to, just to make sure that our healthcare fund stays strong.
So even with these increases, the benchmarking that you did for other communities of our size, where did we land?
Yeah, I think we're still competitive with, we're still probably a little bit high on the family end, but by curtailing their costs, it helps us to stay as competitive as we can be unless, yeah.
Do you see as we increase employees, that the increase will keep our balance and still remain above? Or do you see maybe another three years to have to do the same thing?
Kind of a, I think our balance will stay strong. We may decrease a little bit, but we're looking not to have like a 10% decline. And that could still happen because we don't know what's going to, how things, the health of our employees is going to impact us and the claims and things like that. All we have is information that we have in front of us that the healthcare consultant gives us with experience, claims experience that we have seen in projections. And our consultant helps a number of different communities. So they see more data than just ours. So they know what's driving our healthcare claims. So we would hope that with this increase, we break even. If there's a slight decrease overall, then we're not that concerned at this point.
And for clarity, we've been paying it. We're going to continue to increase what we're contributing. We're asking employees to contribute 3%, not of their salary.
Out of their salary, yes.
Make sure we're being very clear on that, because 3% sounds like a heck of a lot. So we need to make sure that we're clarifying that that's the increase of the insurance cost, not 3% of their salary.
Correct. It's 3% of the current premiums. And I'll just give you an example. Let's just say an employee makes $40,000, and he or she gets a 3% increase in a COLA or merit. 3% of $40,000 is $1,200, as opposed to the largest increase that you have up here is 183.
For the whole year.
For the whole year.
Yeah. Gotcha.
So that's a good comparison.
Right.
It's a tenth. Okay. I think that's...
Thank you, Wade.
Yes, thank you. Very good clarification.
I'd like to point out that healthcare costs last year went up 7%. And this year, they projected to go up 7%. And three years ago and beyond, backwards, going backwards, it was double digits every year for the last 10 years. So the fact that we've got one 3% increase in a seven-year period, when healthcare costs have probably gone up 50% overall, I think is phenomenal. I mean, that we can, that we've managed it that well. And that's, I think, because we're self-insured. I think that's credit to, you know, the efforts of, you know, all the department heads keep, you know, doing, but all the offerings we have to keep employees healthy, helping them out, you know, diet, exercise, and the...
I think that's the biggest driver, is the things that we do to try to keep our employees healthy.
Can you go back to that slide that lists all the things that... It is amazing.
Which one?
That one. The fact that there's a nurse practitioner and the one there. You keep going past it.
That one.
No.
Too fast, Wade. Back one.
You have one that has the nurse practitioner at the very beginning of it, and then a list. That one. There's all of your wellness programs that reduce claims, which I think is really, really important.
And as you can see, we keep adding things to it, like there's a new weight management program coming that a lot of us can stand to use.
Those are really good. So any other questions or comments from council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve a 3% increase to health insurance premiums for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, for employees and the city.
Thank you. We have a motion. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mayor, members of council, I would like to thank our finance director's leadership and work on this, but I would also like to thank him for maintaining self-control. There were no hand signals. There were no wolf cry. But I know he wants to show off his tie, so if you would like to do that, Wade.
We can do that.
Rocking his NC stamp.
He's got his wolfback tie on, so.
Hey, congratulations. I saw the...
People showing off their stuff now. There you go.
Yes, there you go. Thank you. Thank you so much. Okay, we are moving on. Counsel to consider approving a pilot small business assistance program in partnership with Rowan County Chamber of Commerce. Our presenter this evening is Planning and Neighborhood Director Hannah Jacobson. Welcome and welcome, Elaine.
Good evening, Mayor Alexander, members of council. Very pleased to be here tonight to give you an overview of a pilot small business program that we've been developing in partnership with the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce. Also pleased to have Elaine Spalding, President of the Rowan Chamber, here to answer any questions that you may have. First, I think it's important to recognize that small business grants are consistent with our newly adopted strategic plan. They advance one of our key focus areas, which is for economic and workforce development, specifically the strategy that reads promote an environment to support small business development and growth, to include evaluation of grants and partnerships that benefit small businesses. I think it's also important to recognize that this pilot program would be just another tool in our toolbox to support businesses. The city already offers a number of grant programs, including the municipal service grant, the industry grant, which are both facade improvement grants. For larger investments, we look at downtown revitalization incentives. That was on your last agenda. And then for projects that bring significant job growth to the city, we are looking to revitalize our economic development incentive grant program. And through our MSD taxes, we also support the efforts of Downtown Salisbury, Inc., with education and events. And they, in turn, then use that support to leverage additional grant opportunities. Last year, they brought funding in from the Duke Energy Foundation. You might recognize that there's a common theme here. Many of these grant opportunities are offered primarily in downtown Salisbury. But with this grant opportunity, we saw an opportunity to look outside of downtown and to do so in a slightly different way. So council has been exploring how to support small businesses for several years. Councilmember Post brought us a really innovative idea to involve Kiva.org, which is a way to finance businesses with no interest loans through a crowdfunded platform online. We explored that program from a number of different angles, but we're never able to get that program launched locally. And, but so during last year's budget, we pivoted and adopted a $30,000 budget for a pilot program that we would, with a recommendation to partner with the Rowan Chamber to administer those grants. And so that's what we've done. We've taken our time. We've spoken with each of you on multiple occasions to outline kind of our intent for the program. We've communicated that with the Rowan Chamber. And then they, in turn, submitted a letter of intent outlining a grant program to us on March 9, and that was included in your packet. So just to walk through some of those kind of high-level program goals. We're looking at this program as a way to strengthen and grow established small businesses. So this is not necessarily to launch a new business, but to expand an existing business. We're looking to pursue equity by filling gaps that are left by systemic barriers to resources. We know that not everyone has access to the traditional capital that you might get from a bank, so this is an alternative. We also want to facilitate the rehabilitation of buildings that are outside of downtown and some of the priority corridors and centers that were identified in the Forward 2040 Comprehensive Plan. An example of that might be the South Main Corridor, where we're currently starting work on an area plan, or the West Industry Corridor. So who might qualify for this grant? Well, all businesses within Salisbury that have 10 or fewer employees or full-time equivalent employees, so long as they have the proper permits to operate. And even though the program would be offered through the Chamber of Commerce, membership of the Chamber would not be a prerequisite for the grants. Businesses would be eligible for between $5,000 and $10,000 in the form of a grant. So council understood that the cash flow can be an issue for small businesses. So these would be offered as an upfront grant. And for this year, again, we only have $30,000, so we're anticipating between three and six grants would be awarded. Grants could be used for a number of things. They, businesses could apply to make what we call kind of permanent improvements to the building. Of course, nothing is truly permanent, so what we really mean by that is things that can't be picked up and moved easily, things that would stay with the building, awnings, floorings, lighting, kind of built-in benches or counters, things like that. What's a little bit different about these grants is that they could also be used for essential pieces of equipment that help, that the business needs to advance themselves. So something like a lawnmower, or helping to upfit a food truck, or catering equipment, things of that nature. What would not be eligible would be the ongoing operational expenses, such as rent, utilities, payroll, financing debt, memberships, or other kind of soft costs. So again, the grant program would not be offered through the city. Instead, the Rowan Chamber would be the one to solicit applications and would review the applications. And when I turn it over to Elaine to speak, she can talk about the committee structure, but it would include a member of the Salisbury city staff on that review committee. There would also, the applications would be reviewed based on some scoring criteria. So factors that might be included in that scoring criteria would be a demonstrated need for assistance. So why do you need this money in order to advance your business? What's the sustainability of the business model? We would encourage people to use the services of the Small Business Assistant, of the Small Business Center, the RCCC. We're curious what the benefits to the broader community are, how this business can help benefit the broader community. We're also interested in how we can pursue equity through this grant. So additional points might be given if the business is located within an economically disadvantaged census tract, or if the business owner qualifies as low moderate income. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Elaine, so she can talk about her vision for announcing the program, advertising it, and how she's going to plan to keep council up to date throughout the year.
Yes, thank you, Hannah. And I would like to thank Mayor and the council for all of the input that you've given us through this process. I know many of you come from a business background, and you know how important it is to lift up our small and emerging businesses here. I'd also like to thank city manager Jim Green. He was the one who initially came to the Rowan Chamber with this idea. He'd seen it in other communities, and we did some research on other small business grants in other communities. And Hannah and Kelly Baker have both been wonderful to work with through this process. So as we got nearer to the time to present to you tonight, we thought, wouldn't this be great if we could announce this new small business grant at the Minority Business Trade Show, which is coming up on April 25 at Livingstone Hospitality Center? This is our second Minority Biz Trade Show. Last year, we had wonderful participation from the community, and we thought this might be a nice venue to make that announcement. So that's part of the proposal tonight. In your packet of materials, you saw the folks that we are recommending to serve on, the task force for the small business grant. It's a really good, diverse panel, and I initially contacted them in July of 2023, and then got back in touch recently, and they are all willing to serve. So glad to work with you guys and answer any other questions that you have.
Sure.
Thank you.
I have a question. So first, thank you for taking this. I have a question. So first, thank you for taking this up. Very much appreciated. So one question I have is, small business owners, some of them, this may be the first time going through a grant process. And sometimes, when it's your first time, it's like trying to read the tax code, right? Trying to understand the lingo, the terminology.
Been doing that for 54 years and still don't get it.
Right, 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 right. So you know, for those, as we're trying to do this workaround equity, we know that this can be a systemic barrier for first-time applicants to a grant. Sometimes the language is just too, too heavy. And so I'm hoping that maybe there's going to be some mentoring, some workshopping, to give people the capacity to work their way through that process. That would be very much helpful. Because I've seen a lot of people get lost in that process and just give up. It's just too difficult.
Yes, one of our task force members is Meg Spitt, who is the RCCC Small Biz Center Director, and she's offered to help with that.
Oh, sweet. Okay. Thank you.
What I like also, you know, first of all, thank you again, because you know, if you look at Salisbury, we are made up a lot of small business. You don't have a large chains, a lot of chain restaurants or chain businesses around here. So it's all mom-and-pop type of business. So this is a great opportunity to support those businesses outside of just the downtown and move into the complete all of Salisbury. But again, like has been said, you know, it's, the trade show is coming up, and it'd be nice to be able to have an opportunity, because a lot of those individuals at those trade shows, you know, one thing about the trade show, you learn something. You know, it's just not presenting your product, what you have, but also opportunity to be taught by somebody, say, hey, you may want to try this or do something else. What I'd like to see also at that time when we roll it out is that you have somebody be able to start applying there at that time. Because sometimes you turn it on, look at the opportunities, wait, what does this mean? What does that mean? But if you have somebody there to help you walk you through, because it'd be your first time. Maybe, you know, with the city, with Livingstone, maybe have a room or something where they can sit out and fill that application and get the process started. So I would like to see something like that.
I think that's a great idea. And we do have some private spaces that I think Livingstone College could work with us on, and be happy to help coordinate that one.
That'd be great. If anybody who's can come by and just start to apply, that'd be great.
Sure, sure, yeah.
And I recommend anyone, small business listener, that, you know, participate in it, because it's really a great opportunity. You do learn quite a bit.
Yes, we heard some fantastic success stories from last year's Minority Biz Trade Show, both from the vendor standpoint, some of the small businesses that just had a pop-up shop that since last year's trade show have opened their own brick and mortar stores, and that's been great. And then from the major employer standpoint, we had a number of our major employers ask us for a list of those businesses that participated in that. And it was wonderful to be able to share the different types of businesses and the types of services that they can provide.
I think Dave and I participated last year in it.
Yeah.
I had a couple of questions. So to go to Harry's thing, we show up at the trade show, and he's bigger than I am, and he gets in front of me in front of the line. He gets his grant and application in first, and this is first come, first served. And he's number three asking for $10,000 bucks. And number one and two are $10,000, we've got $30,000, and I'm number four. Does that mean I'm out? Is there any type of qualitative-
It's not first come, first served, sir.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not. It will, the committee will review based on all the criteria that Hannah covered.
Okay, that's, it was in some of our materials, so I'm glad to hear that. The second thing is, I'm a little concerned about some of the timelines. I'm confident that the Salisbury Post will publish something about this. Hint, hint, Brad. You know, before April 25. And so I presume that you can say right now where they send the applications to the chamber, right?
Info@rowanchamber.com.
Okay, and then the window's only open for one month, which is a pretty short window. You know, which means we've got to make some noise beyond the chamber, beyond the newspaper. However, I mean, beyond our website. I don't know how many small businesses go to the salisburync.gov website looking for money. So I just think that's pretty important that we get the word out, because the timeframe is so little. And the other thing I just wanted to point out is that I started a small business. It was in bankruptcy. We lost money for five years. Then we finally made some money. We grew from $200,000 to $40 million business in about 13, 14 years. Proud recipient of Chamber Small Business Award along the way. And yet, our success measurement is also a really short timeframe, because you, I mean, the materials say that at the trade show, we're going to announce that some success stories. Sometimes it takes a minute or two to turn something around or to get something off the ground. So I presume what the trade show, I mean, what the Chamber's annual meeting-
Yeah, the annual meeting. It's not the trade show where we-
Yeah, that's what I mean. But the annual meetings in January, which is, gives people a six-month runtime to be successful. I mean, anybody who's been in business knows that that's really, that doesn't happen. It takes a little bit longer. So I presume what the annual meeting will do is maybe reflect on who the recipients were, and perhaps in the future, as some successes come out of that, you know, use that as a platform for that. Because I would not have wanted to have been judged, you know, the first six months after I bought this company that, you know, was a few million bucks in the hole when I bought it. So it took me a year to learn what the heck the business was all about, first of all. So I just throw those out as some ideas, because that's a really quick turnaround. You've been here for seven years?
Eleven.
Eleven, okay. So you've been here for 11 years, and you're the type of person that had your feet firmly planted in the community, you know, pretty quickly. But it took you a few years to do some of the things you've done so successfully, like the Dragon Boat Festival's been here five or 10 years? That was your second year. There you go. So it took you a year. Just be cognizant of those things. That's all I'm saying.
I understand and appreciate that. And I think different types of businesses would need a longer runway. So I think it's very appropriate that you raise that issue, yeah.
Let's just be cognizant. Maybe at the annual meeting, instead of awarding, trying to pick winners, you know, pick recipients, you know, recognize recipients or something like that. That's all I'm suggesting.
Sure.
But thank you for doing this.
Yeah, Elaine, thank you for getting the chamber involved. This helped us get this in the right direction without us picking and choosing. And so having a committee that does that is great. I'm glad that we are going to use that money this year. Again, the key word here is this is a pilot one. So yeah, the timeframes will be different on the first one. We understand that. Most of us do. And so I think it's great that we're getting this money spent. I know a lot of work's going into that. The fact that, one of the other big highlights that I liked about it was an operational, right? These are just solid investments so that they can, you know, they can cover their operational costs and be able to buy whatever equipment or whatever it is. They need to expand that and grow. And so I think it's just great all the way around. Thank you for your partnership in doing it, Hannah and your team, and Kelly, for, you know, getting this together so that we are spending this in this budget year. That's the big thing for me, that we are spending this money that we committed to. So thank you for all that. And I am happy to make a motion unless you have something to say, mayor.
I would like to say one thing. In the presentation that we got, there was a commitment also that the chamber would reach out to state and federal entrepreneurial development agencies and encourage grant recipients to apply for the NC IDEA grants and seek angel investment funds. And I'm sure that means that you would be going out and maybe using this as leverage in the private community to say, the city as a government has given this. Would you all like to participate and match? And I would like to see that effort happen as a part of this. And I know that we can't do everything the first year, but I do want that to be a strong effort, because I think that's important and essential for us being able to continue it.
Yes, mayor, you're exactly right. And I think you met at our last Women in Business event. We have a young woman who recently moved to our community because she was so attracted to Salisbury because of all the good things that you guys have done to improve this community. And she's already won two of the NC IDEA grants, and she's offered to kind of help us get structured so that we can help other businesses get those grants.
Right, and then we leverage more. If she gets a grant from this, then she's leveraging multiple other grants.
Yes.
So yeah, that's the way I see it working and really having sustainability over time. So thank you so much for being a partner, for your patience. I know that it was a very long process, but I think what you can see that's netted from this long process is that we have a very comprehensive, well-thought-out plan. So thank you Hannah and all of the team that worked with you and Elaine to put this together, because I think we, as a council, now feel very secure in using the money for this purpose. It's something we've wanted to do for a long time.
Comes from the heart.
Yes, thank you so much. So with that, I will entertain a motion. Tamara, you said that you would do that.
So I make a motion to approve a pilot small business assistance program in partnership with the Rowan County Chamber of Commerce.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, aye? Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you both. Excellent presentation. Thank you so much. And now we are at number 12. Counsel to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with CPI Architects and Engineers PC in the amount of $197,373 and up to an additional $28,000 if needed for alternates for a multi-use center master plan for the Civic Center Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Ruffey Homes Senior Center regarding the partnership and reimbursement of 50% of the contract amount. And our presenter this evening is Director Chris Tester. Yes.
I'm on the Ruffey Homes board, and I was part of the genesis of this idea. So should I, I think I should recuse myself. What do you think? I mean-
I don't think so.
I mean, do I have, I mean-
Graham, what do you think?
Uh, yes.
Yes?
Well, yes, because it's going to authorize a memorandum.
It's authorizing spending, and I'm on the other board.
Yes, recuse yourself then. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor, and council members for this opportunity. To speak to you tonight on behalf of the Parks and Recreation Department and the selection team consisting of Ruffey Homes and multiple city departments. What we'll discuss here is an update to council on actions taken since the January 2024 retreat and provide recommendations on the next steps. The opportunities that we have here is to combine efforts with Ruffey Homes Senior Center for a project that serves all residents regardless of age in the city and county at the same time. Seek resident input on the needs of the proposed multiple-use facility. Offer enhanced recreation, life skills, and social programs on the south end of the city. Partner on funding, program, and management. Collaborate on grant opportunities and create an integrated campus field with a shared facility. So if you recall, we put out an RFQ, Request for Qualifications for Site Master Plan and Feasibility Study. This included items like public engagement, facilities needs assessment, analyzing of Parks and Recreation Senior Center standards and trends, feasibility studies, site analysis, and site master plan and basic conceptual facility designs. We received 14 total submissions, 12 for the overall project, and two specifically for senior center and multi-generational elements of the project. Multiple department teams of the city, as well as three representatives from Ruffey Homes, scored all the submissions and interviewed the top three candidates, firms for the overall plan, and two firms for the senior center. We selected two firms, one to work on the entire project and one with the senior center for the multi-generational facilities expertise. And both firms are extremely qualified and have experience with similar projects. If you recall, we discussed this at the council retreat and asked for your approval to move forward with trying to develop a scope and contracts with CPL as well as lifespan. So here is a, basically the scope that was given for this contract. I want to preface this with, as you review this, notice that Task 1 through 3 will run concurrently. They're not, they're separated in the scope to show the relationship of CPL and lifespan. They're not intended to be separate entities. So Task 1, Community Engagement. Task 2, Programming and Conceptual Design for Recreation, Outdoor Aquatics, Senior Center, Park Amenities. Task 3, Programming and Conceptual Design for Senior Center. Develop and review the program, present universal design, design for agent concepts to be incorporated. Participate in site layout discussions and develop preliminary design space plans. So again, all those will run together. They're not intended to be separate community engagements. They're meant to be together. It's just to show how CPL and lifespan are related to each other in this scope. Task 4 will be the opinion of probable cause and project budget. Task 5 will be operations and revenue analysis. And Task 6 will be final preparation and presentation. So there's two alternates that they also put in the scope. Alternate number one is facility audit. That would be basically auditing the current facilities that we have, both Ruffey Homes as well as the current Civic Center facilities, and looking at the exterior envelope integrity, structural components, mechanical, electrical, plumbing, infrastructure conditions, life safety and building code deficiencies, and interior finishes. The second alternative is the 3D visualization and renderings. We'll get the conceptual floor plan, exterior designs, and two to three renderings. And site plans are part of the regular scope, but the 3D visual renderings could help add a better visualization for the final product and marketing purposes in trying to generate funds for this. So the schedule that we have is a community engagement taking about 144 days. Programming and master planning, about 72 days. Opinion of probable cost, 20 days. Final preparation and presentation, 21 days. Anticipate final presentation to city council and Ruffey Homes in early November. The project kickoff will occur around the middle of April and with final documents being provided by the end of December 2024. And that'll line us up for council retreat 2025 to have recommendations on moving forward for that. So the recommendations are to authorize the city manager to enter into a contract with CPL Architects and Engineers PC for multi-use center master planning for a fee of $197,373 plus up to $28,500 if needed for alternates. And second, authorize city manager to enter into and negotiate and approve a memorandum of understanding with Ruffey Homes Senior Center to cover the partnership and reimbursement of 50% of the contract amount.
Okay, any questions? Thank you, Chris. Any questions from council?
Chris, I was looking at the proposal, and you know, that community is an older community in terms of retirees. Does that study include traffic patterns and increased traffic and noise in that particular area that may occur with the new facility?
It definitely includes traffic patterns within the facility. On the street itself, I don't think that's included in that. Wendy, do you? Yeah, no, that, it's not included as part of this, not, not the street.
That's possible something to be looked at? I don't know if that's something that's standard, that has been done in the past. I just know, it's very quiet.
There are already three lanes over there.
I'm talking about through the neighborhood. I mean, it's very quiet, you know, some people are going to cut through, and it's just depending on what size it's going to be, what kind of expectation of traffic and more. And then also, Task 2, with that, when you go to Task 2, some of the things that we're talking about, is that going to include everything? Or that's just something that is going to be looked at?
Yeah, so I separated those portions of the task out, but yes, all of those are part of Task 2, all those bullets that are in there, from the recreation, outdoor aquatics, senior center, park amenities, everything from, all that it could have outside in the parks, be it dog parks, and everything that's included in park amenities. So yes, all that's included as part- So, yes, all that's included is part of that task.
So, I want to clarify the question from the neighborhood in terms of, do we have any data that can illuminate us right now as to how often that facility is used, how much traffic is already generated from using that large area as events center? Will that help in any way? I mean, can we get some information together?
And the reason why I'm asking, Mayor, is because I know when they shut down certain streets, I see the traffic, and they're speeding going through because people want to cut through and get to their destination quicker, and you can see that a lot. Now, I'm just curious, now when you put a new facility there, you're going to have more people wanting to go, getting there a different way, cutting through the neighborhood instead of taking the main road. It's a possibility. I'm just curious if there was something that'd be looked at.
I do feel like it's something that...
Speed bumps down later on, more stop signs in certain areas or something like that.
I agree.
I see that being a problem with more of that facility, whether you want to do it, and now you're putting a pole and everything there, you're going to have people cut through the neighborhood, you're going to have increased speed. And the problems that we have now, you're going to see in that neighborhood that didn't have before. I just wanted to see if there's something that could be looked at.
Absolutely. And we have a wonderful transportation department. I don't necessarily want to sign them up for anything, but I think that's something that can be looked at.
I do think that it's relevant, and also compare, you know, what is already the burden on that neighborhood from the existing events that happen there all the time anyway? And then the added burden, to your point, Harry. So, I think it's a good thing to listen to, to evaluate. Thank you.
Since he called me out. I do think that's a great idea. We can get information on usage from Parks and Recreation. We can share that with the consultants, but we can also, as a department, take a look at those traffic patterns through the neighborhood. And when the consultant is doing their master planning, they will have a projection of vehicles, and we can use that data.
Data to help. Okay. That... I think that's what we need, something that we can show the public. This is what can be expected, and here's how we're going to mitigate it, if it's possible.
Yes.
Yeah.
Would you pull that from, like, the three existing facilities today? What they're doing and then what they project that increase to be? Is that how that would work?
Yes, we can look at that. But now, when the new master plan is done, the consultant, I would assume, would have an idea of what that usage would be, so we can actually use those numbers as well.
That makes sense.
Yep. So, thank you very much.
Yeah, as part of their program and their recommendation, I agree with Wendy. They would have a time impact, because part of that's even the study, you know, like we talked about multi-generational, some may use it earlier in the morning, some may use it later in the evenings, and determining those timeframes also. So, that's also part of the study.
And then we'll know what to do to mitigate the cut-throughs or the other behaviors that we don't want to happen as well.
Because the neighborhoods that are impacted, it won't necessarily be clear.
But we can mitigate it as it happens. Yeah. It's just something that we need to be aware of. So, thank you for that. Okay, any other questions from...
Just a comment. Just, it's exciting to see this start out initially as a conversation, as an idea, and how we've got to this point. This could be a very significant investment for our community. We have very few cultural spaces where we have generations coming together, and so I'm really excited about the prospect of having this in our community. So, thank you for the work that you're doing, Chris. Appreciate you.
I'm very excited, and the partnership that we have with Ruffey Homes. I mean, it's a great way to leverage resources in a way that can give more options to our community members, multigenerationally. Jim?
Mayor, I just, thank you. I wanted to add, and Nan's in the back, and it has been a well-thought-out process. Nan and her team have been very involved and very supportive, so I echo your comments and appreciate the partnership with Ruffey Homes and Nan, and this is exciting. In the last three projects, you had partnership with Rotary at, for the archway, you had partnership on grants with the Chamber, and now a partnership with Ruffey Homes on this community center, senior center project. So, this, these partnerships are important, not just for us, but for other organizations and for the community.
And I think it will also do us well in competition for grant opportunities as we move through and actually have a set construction cost for this project to go for federal as well as state funds because of all the partnerships that we have. So, I'm very excited about what we're doing here.
And when we had an opportunity to meet with the federal reps, they mentioned that the partnership is very important.
They mentioned that exactly. How much, yes, how important partnerships across government and private and nonprofits, as well as partnerships across boundaries as far as city, county, and they are actually funded mostly by the county for aging services. So, that's really good. I would just make a recommendation that, at some point, Nan, that maybe the new leadership at the Ruffey Homes might be part of the team. I don't know if there's a place that someone could come in, but I think for having transition, you've obviously been a key person, but I think that that might be a good addition to the overall team at some point, when it's appropriate. So, with that, I will entertain a motion from council.
I'll make the motion to authorize city manager to enter into contract with CPL Architects and Engineers PC in the amount of one hundred and ninety-seven thousand three hundred and seventy-three dollars and up to additional twenty-eight thousand if needed for alternate for a multiple-use center master plan for the Civic Center Improvement Project, and to enter a memorandum of understanding with Ruffey Homes Senior Center regarding the partnership and reimbursement of fifty percent of the contract amount.
Hey, we have a motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Thank you, David. You can return. Thank you so much.
He tells my vote.
Yes.
Of course.
Well, all your work is your vote. So, that's good. Council to consider approving the removal of the median within the cul-de-sac on Jared Steel Lane. And our presenter this evening is Wendy Brundle, Director of Transportation Director. Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening again. I'm coming before you this evening to talk about Jared Steel Lane. This is a very small development off Marlin Park Road. So, Marlin Park Road is here. If you would continue this way, you would get to Faith Road, and going kind of west would get you to Jake Alexander Boulevard. We received a concern from our sanitation department that pickup was about impossible around this cul-de-sac because people park there for their homes. We went out on a random day and just got a picture. It was about two in the afternoon, and there was one vehicle parked there then. So, our first attempt to remedy the situation was we contacted the property owners here, talked to them about restricting parking just in the cul-de-sac, and we had several of the owners reach out to us and said that would give them undue hardship if they had to not park near their home in the cul-de-sac. So, we started looking at alternates and explored the option of removing the median, and you can see the median here. And if we do that, both sanitation EMS have said they would have room to maneuver in here and do what they need to do to provide services. So, our current uniform construction standards actually require the median. That's why we're coming before you today, because it would be... If someone were building this new, they would have to come before you for that variance to remove the median. Our proposed uniform construction standards, which have not been adopted yet, but we're working towards that, it's with DEQ right now for some review, actually does not require that median, and it makes the radius a little bit larger as well. So, we are asking, in this case, if you would approve the removal of the median in Jared Steel Lane. The work will be done by our Public Works Department, and this would just be a paved median at that point. And you can see in the picture here, there's one on Mathis Lane as well. At this point, there's no issues there. People aren't parking in that, on the street within that cul-de-sac, so we are not proposing a change to Mathis, but only to Jared Steel.
And it can't be a smaller median? It has to be removed completely?
We have not explored the option of a smaller median when we talked about it because our standards are changing so that it's not...
Not a requirement?
Not a requirement. We were just going to go ahead and recommend that removal.
It's just nice to have a green space.
Yeah. And the property owners have been contacted. They know this is the solution that we're proposing as well.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other questions from council?
I have one. There are six houses touching the cul-de-sac there on Jared Steel Lane, and you contacted all six of those.
That is correct.
And what if there's six houses touching the cul-de-sac on Mathis Avenue? And did we contact all six of those?
We have not contacted anyone on Mathis because we're not going to be removing that one, and they don't have that same issue. They're not parking. They don't need the parking in the cul-de-sac, apparently. But in Jared Steel Lane, when our sanitation department is picking up out there, they can't enter the cul-de-sac because of the vehicles parked there.
But is the cul-de-sac on Mathis... Is the road bigger?
No, it's the same size. People just aren't parking on the street. They're using their...
I don't really understand it because they have two... They have double garages. So, why is there a need for parking on the street?
I don't know. When we contacted them about restricting that parking, they did reach out. I think it was three of the six owners reached out and said that it was not desirable. I think we had some letters from two of them, and I apologize, I don't have those with me.
It seems to me that the situation on Mathis is the same as on Jared Steel Lane, and it's just a matter of luck that maybe there were... I mean, if you look at that photograph, there's an automobile on Mathis Avenue, but there's not one on Jared Steel Lane. I mean, so...
In this photograph, I think the automobile is actually moving. It doesn't look parked. This one to the right is Jared Steel Lane. That one is parked on that particular day.
And they have a full driveway, so I don't understand.
They do each have full driveways, yes.
Where they park.
Yeah, it could be to have family, kids, you know, two garages for, you know, two adults and then children, and they can't park. But the question is, does it... To come here and suggest it, is there a cost associated with that? And the reason I'm asking that, can we just make the ordinance in case that ever occurs instead of having to go through this process again for the one facing northwest, to say we also include that if, when necessary, to remove that as well? Have you said you have contacted all of them, and they haven't?
So, we did not contact anyone on Mathis because the...
It's not in question.
Yeah, the complaint originated through our sanitation department, and they've had multiple occasions where they couldn't pick up the trash. So, as we investigated it, we reached out to the property owners on Jared Steel Lane. There's not been an issue reported to us on Mathis, and we did clarify that with Bailey, with Public Works, and she said there's not an issue picking up in Mathis.
I guess if one comes up, then we'll address it when...
We would address it as it comes up, yes.
And you're working on the overall one going forward?
Yes, so the uniform construction standards will eliminate the requirement for the median.
Gotcha.
Okay. Yeah, because I don't... I mean, that's expensive to have somebody build it, and then we take it away.
Wendy, in addition to solid waste, did you talk to the fire department? Were there...
We did. We reached out to the fire department. They also have issues. The fire department has issues with many of the cul-de-sacs, but this one in particular because of... Anytime someone's parked there, it...
They can't get by with the vehicles. Right. Okay.
Go with the Madam Mayor. You mentioned that if you could make it smaller and then have the one that you can ride over, would that satisfy that?
I have not investigated that. We could put it in and do a turning template and see if it appears that it would work.
Just seems like a shame to not have a little green space. It could even put a tree there or something.
And I don't know if Chris Tester, since it's his group that's picking, if he has any opinions on that or not.
Come up here, Mr. Tester.
I saw Chris shake his head no, and I saw the fire chief both take their head no. Like, it's not a feasible thing.
Okay.
I just saw two head no shakes, like, no.
All right. And we've already gotten our answer then.
I feel like...
From a Public Works standpoint, I was a big advocate on removing it from the uniform construction standards and putting it like it is because it is very difficult to get around. It's very difficult to find somebody to maintain it. It's not publicly mained, but it... I mean, it's not publicly maintained. It's not maintained by our city departments. It has to be maintained by somebody in HOA, but it's in the city right of way. So, we always have that argument of who maintains and who doesn't, but we do not maintain those as far as mowing the grass, trimming the trees.
So, then it becomes an issue with grass growing.
So, yes, the preferences for...
And then it's not... So, it's really, there's no reason to make it smaller because it'd be so small that it would be...
And likely, if you, like you said, if you put a tree in it and the tree gets past its lifespan of that pot, it's going to start breaking up.
Breaks up the concrete. Okay. Very good. Thank you. That's what I needed to hear.
Chris, what about Mathis, though? I mean, is it... Apparently, the sanitation trucks have a problem on Jared Steel, but not on Mathis?
Only because of the parking.
It's nothing to do with the design, it's just because of the parking.
So, once somebody starts parking there, we're going to have the same discussion a second time?
Potentially.
Or any across the whole city, probably.
So, that's why we're taking away these grass areas.
For the future, yes, that's why we're eliminating.
Just a cul-de-sac with paving, which is what most places have that I've ever seen. So, it's true. Okay.
My question is, do we have to have a complainant to do the same thing? Do we have to have somebody complain? I mean, the fire truck's still got the same problem getting in, the trash truck's still got the...
Is it better just to do both while we're out there? I guess that's your question.
My question is, why wait for somebody to complain if it's the right thing to do? I mean, someday, somebody's going to park there. The fire truck's not going to be able to get in, sanitation truck's not going to be able to get in, and we have to have the same conversation when we can see it's exactly the same size with the same number of houses on the same size cul-de-sac.
To do both.
It is, and these are all throughout the city. I mean, I don't think we want to go in throughout the city and remove all of the medians if there's not issues. We haven't reached out to those property owners. I don't know if they would object to having it removed.
Do they cut the grass?
They would be the ones that maintain that, yes.
Mayor, council staff's recommendation, we know we have the problem on the one cul-de-sac, and...
So, that's all we want to deal with?
Right now, we're recommending that. Again, and the point's valid, if we see this problem at others, it may not be, it doesn't may be another. We may need to bring those back to you as well to make sure our solid waste trucks and our fire trucks can provide services to these homes.
And typically, our first, our first preference would be to restrict the parking. In this case, we did have the pushback from the property owner, so that's why we're suggesting the removal.
Okay. Okay. Then I will turn it back to council for your decision. Do I hear a motion?
I made the motion to approve the removal of a median within the cul-de-sac of Jared Steel Lane.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries. Thank you so much. Thank you, Wendy. And now we're at number fourteen. Council to consider adopting an ordinance to board up the dilapidated residential structure located at five sixteen South Clay Street per city code, chapter ten of the minimum housing ordinance. And our presenter this evening is Code Services Manager, Michael Cotilla. Welcome, Michael.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Potem and Council. Tonight, Code Services would like you to consider adopting an ordinance to board up the residential structure at five sixteen South Clay Street per the requirements of chapter ten fifty-three of the city's minimum housing ordinance. As we see here, the the blue highlighted parcel is five sixteen South Clay Street. It is near the intersection of Old Concord Road and South Clay Street. The owner recited for violations of the city's minimum housing ordinance on October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. The hearing date was scheduled for December twelfth, twenty twenty-three, and no one attended that hearing. At the hearing, we set the compliance deadline, which was set for March twelfth, twenty twenty-four. The property was inspected on March thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, and was found to be out of compliance. Property owner was cited for the broken glass panes on the windows and unsecured, excuse me, unsecured exterior doors and abandoned residential structure, as well as overgrown grass and weeds. Section ten seventy-eight of the minimum standards of fitness minor violations was used, as well as ten sixty-one, uh, the regulation of vacant, neglected and abandoned residential properties, as well as section ten fifty-three, failure to comply. Subsection B states that after a property owner's failure to comply with the order of the inspector within the time specified, that the inspector shall submit to the city council an ordinance ordering the inspector to cause such dwelling or dwelling unit to be repaired, altered, improved, vacated, or have highlighted closed. In this case, the word closed refers to securing and boarding. Believe it or not, behind that shrubbery there, there is a house. This picture, as you can see, was taken in April of twenty twenty-three, when it was cited for the overgrowth. This is a, if you're looking at the the property and looking at the structure, it's the right side. This is the left side of the house. Again, the front of the house. This picture was taken last week after we cleared all of the overgrowth from around the front of the house, the side of the house, and the rear of the house. As you can see, the windows in the front are all broken out. Uh, so our request tonight is for council to consider adopting an ordinance to board up the structure located at five sixteen, excuse me, five sixteen South Clay Street per city code, chapter ten of the city's minimum housing ordinance. Any questions?
So when does it get to the point where we require a demolition of it?
So this house will be on my new demolition list, which typically I start working after the beginning of the new fiscal year. Uh, so right around this time next year, um, this one will probably be before you. We need to do, city attorney has to do a title search, and we need to identify uh, any stakeholders in in the property before we can start the demolition process. So typically, around this time of year is when we start, we're we're towards the end of our demolition list and um, we start looking for properties that are not out of compliance after being cited. And then we bring them before council for for demolition.
So this is an interim to just board it up and make it safe?
It's to secure it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And our cost to do the removal and cleanup and all that, that becomes a lien?
Correct, so the board up, um, I've gotten a quote for the board up. It's right around twelve hundred dollars. We've spent three hundred dollars thus far to remove some of that.
Yeah.
Foliage. Um, and next week, we are removing this bit of foliage right here, as well as the other one, when we mow it, and we board it up.
And then we'll have to continue to, unless.
We will continue to.
The owner takes responsibility, we have to continue that every, whenever it needs us.
Typically, we do chronic properties, we mow them every three weeks, uh, two and a half to three weeks. Uh, we're starting tomorrow, so tomorrow, we're gonna start mowing properties. I expect, from what I've gathered from the neighbors, is that this owner is deceased. And we'll kind of figure all that out once we we conduct, the city attorney does his title search.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from council? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Make a motion to adopt an ordinance to order the boarding up and securing of a deteriorated vacant and abandoned dwelling unfit for human habitation located at five sixteen South Clay Street in the city of Salisbury, North Carolina.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now we're at fifteen. Council to consider authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with ESP Associates in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred for the survey, surface utility, engineering, and civil engineering services associated with the downtown water line improvement project. And our presenter this evening is Assistant Utilities Director, Jason Wilson. Welcome, Jason.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening to discuss an exciting project for us. So we're piggybacking on the Main Street project to replace a significant amount of water lines in Main Street, as well as some back alley fire lines that I think you've been hearing about for several years that we're interested in. So we have an opportunity through not only the Main Street project, but our recent public safety grant that we received from the state. So we're gonna be using a portion of that ten million dollar grant, as well as some of the earmarked funds for the Main Street grant, as well as some of our annual operating budget for water line improvements and rehabilitation. So we are partnering with ESP Associates, who is pre-qualified as an engineering design firm for the city already, and is currently working on the Main Street project. So we are excited to be able to take the opportunity while the street is gonna be in disrepair for a while to go ahead and replace these water lines downtown so we don't have to dig up the street again in the future when they ultimately fail at the end of their useful life. So that that's why this request is before you this evening. This is for the design and permitting for this project. And then construction will be, take place kind of in conjunction with the Main Street upgrades.
Okay, any questions? Council, then I will entertain a motion.
I have a question. You have a map that was in our materials. It's some blue lines and some red lines.
I see them.
You see that map? The 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 red lines just outline privately owned property, and the purple lines just outline publicly owned property, I presume, city of Salisbury. No, that's green. Is is, this map is not intended to show what's being, what's happening with respect to ESP, is it? Even though it's in ESP's name is on the map?
This is part of their proposal, so this is their scoping document saying what they're gonna be doing. And this is information, we originally went to ESP asking for a proposal to do the the back alley fire loop design. And then, as part of the Main Street project, it was determined that a significant amount of disturbance is proposed in Main Street. So we were able to take take advantage of that opportunity if the street's gonna be torn up enough that it's not gonna be a larger impact for us to replace the water line. So we, uh, the project team, the city staff, and the design team made the decision to pursue that. So we asked ESP to revise their proposal to us. So this, their initial proposal was just for the back alley fire line design as part of the public safety fire grant. And so now we're using the money from the grant, as well as some of our our annual operating budget earmarks for water line rehabilitation to increase the scope of this this project. So this was related, this map that you're looking at is an ESP-generated map for their proposal only. They they have not done any design work as of yet, just kind of their due diligence in scoping the project.
So, okay, so this isn't, this map doesn't show what they're going to do. I mean, the light blue lines, the minimum water line easements, that's just showing where it is, and it's just showing where the various property lines to the properties are.
This was identifying private property that we we potentially could have to acquire easements on that is not city-owned, uh, in order to install fire lines in back alleys on private property that's not located in the public right of way.
Got it.
Thank you. Good question. Any other questions? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion.
Motion to authorize the city manager to execute an agreement with ESP Associates, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and seventy-four thousand seven hundred dollars for the survey, service, utility, engineering, and civil engineering services associated with the downtown water line improvement project.
Okay, we have a motion. All those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. And Jim, do you have a comment?
No, just Mayor, members of council, uh, next two items are budget items. As for the past couple meetings, bringing you some budget items, not for approval, but for you to give us feedback and share any thoughts or ask any questions you may have. If Mayor and council needs a break, now's a good time to take a short break if you'd like. Or we have Jim Beamer and team ready to get into SRU's budget.
It was your pleasure. Anybody need a break?
Go for it.
Go for it. Are you good?
I'm good. Thank you.
Keep going.
Thank you, Mayor, members of city council. This is for, uh, tonight's presentation is for information purposes only. As City Manager Green mentioned, we're not asking for any action tonight. This presentation consists of three parts. It's our budget highlights for fiscal year twenty-five, some updates on capital projects, and an updated on our rate model. So in addition to Assistant Utilities Director, Jason Wilson, we also have Pfeifer Brant, President and CEO of Raftellus, and Ford Moriarty, the Senior Consultant for Raftellus. We'll be talking about the rate model later in this presentation. Just, many of you know, but I'd just like to point this out, you know, we are a regional utility serving approximately fifty-three thousand customers within Rowan County and nine other municipalities with emergency interconnection. We do that through bulk service, water and/or wastewater operations. A little, many of you know about our history, eighty-nine employees. Our current average residential bill now is sixty-three dollars and eight cents for four people who use four thousand gallons. We do operate under a one-rate policy with no outside rates. And Raftellus may have mentioned something about that. It's a little bit unique, but it's a, it's an equitable way to bill our customers. And we also just wanted to point out, we've invested more than one hundred and thirty-nine million in capital projects since fiscal year two thousand and eight. Talk about your company a little bit, sorry.
Well, thank you, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem.
Could you come over and make sure that you're at, so we can pick you up?
I understand, it's fair, I understand.
Well, again, thank you, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and and council members. As Beamer said, I'm the President and CEO of Raftellus. We're a Charlotte-based water and wastewater financial and rate consulting firm. We're kind of the largest firm of of what we do, kind of our niche work in the country. We also have an organizational excellence practice. I think our, some of our folks have worked with you on strategic planning. Michelle Ferguson may have been been leading that, so, you know, it's a little bit there. But kind of our part of the group specializes in financial planning and rate models, developing them. We have a lot of clients in North Carolina. You can see a list, and there there are a lot more than that. And we actually worked extensively for for Salisbury Rowan Utilities back in the nineties and in the two thousands. I saw the picture of David Trem up on the, of the various city managers, and I I worked with him, or John Softly back in the day as well. So it's exciting to be in front of you all again.
Okay, so looking forward to next year. It's been a a big focus for ours recently on improving, investment in our capital improvements. We hear a lot about CIP, capital improvement planning, capital improvement program. So this is, this is what we're proposing for next year. And if you remember last year, this very similar table was for FY twenty-four. We asked, and you approved six and a half million dollars out of our fund balance to help fund our reimbursement in our in our capital. So this is similar of what we're asking for this year. I won't go through each one of these projects. Just a couple of highlights, electrical system upgrades is something we've kind of been doing some planning on. And so this is for the design of those next year. And then on down the list, critical, critical valve for repair and replacement. And this was the second highest priority in our distribution master, distribution system master plan that was completed a couple of years back by a consultant. We're funding the top priority this year with the fund balance appropriation. That design is underway, and this is, this is just building on that. So if you look down at the bottom of these, we're proposing about three and a half million dollars out of our typical operating budget, asking for another six million of our fund balance. But we've got a new player in the game this year in the third column, which is developer funding. If you remember, we have brought four developer agreements to you this past year to help fund sanitary sewer collection system improvements due to development. So those are, those are developer agreements that we worked with the city attorney on to draft those. And so we're excited to start having some funding available to help with some of these improvements.
Again, when we have our budget work sessions, we'll be happy to give any more detail about these projects.
Real quick, we talked about last year, some of the the fund balance you you approved. This is one of the projects that we're working on. This is the the highest priority in the in the master plan we just discussed. This is some water line improvements to serve the northern part of our system, Spencer, and that part of our 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 system. And then another project that is underway is a septic receiving station that we're proposing to locate at our smaller wastewater treatment plant. This is just a a draft site plan of that. Real quick, this is, uh, this is our screenshot of kind of parts of our CIP. I'm only looking at the first three years projected, along with our current year. It just outlines the projects that we are proposing to do in the future, including next year. So we start with our raw water, which is now the river. Our big project that you're all aware of, the new raw water intake and pump station design, and then subsequent construction. Those are the the big ticket items there. And we move down to water treatment, we basically follow the water cycle from the river all the way back to the river. There's the electrical system upgrades I just mentioned, water distribution. We've got the extensions and rehab replacement that we've got every year. Scrolling on through, get down to sanitary sewer collections, now we're bringing it back to the treatment plant. We've got some of the things that we've been talking about there. Some of the, scroll on down to the sanitary sewer lift stations, this is where we get into the developer-funded projects. So those top six lift stations under lift station capacity upgrades. They always, all of those have a developer-funded component to those because they're they're basically buying capacity into those lift stations that don't have enough capacity to serve their proposed development. We have to allocate capacity for those, and there's not enough to do all that with what they're proposing to add. So they are paying for that that capacity. And then we wrap up through wastewater treatment. There's the septic receiving station. I showed you the schematic site plan of, that we're actually doing some site visits now at other utilities to see how they're doing things, so we're not reinventing the wheel. And then at the bottom shows kind of our, some of our funding sources with the footnotes that most of these projects have earmarked. And you can see capital reserves, fund appropriation, we've used, and then, you know, some potential private partnerships, different, different avenues we can use to fund our capital projects.
Briefly go over some of our fiscal year twenty twenty-five key initiatives. I've done an update on this recently. This is the thirty-one and a half million dollar river pump station relocation intake. We met with FEMA this morning, just as an update. They are in the final steps of their environmental assessment review. It's under the legal review, so I anticipate by the end of the month, this will be on our our website and FEMA's website for public comment. And that'll start the process of receiving the money and then continuing with the design. We are at ninety percent design already for this project, so we're ahead of schedule. Well, also, continued investment in infrastructure upgrades meet future demands due to growth. This aligns with the the new city's strategic plan. And as Jason mentioned, we have a lot of master planning we're doing. And also, to implement system development fees, we've been to you several times about that. We're finalizing that process, and we're hoping to to put those out for review soon.
Yeah, so we mentioned a couple of master plans, so we we do continue that. We're looking at at different components of our of our utility and trying to master plan those out. So that gives us a prioritized list for that specific component, whether it be wastewater treatment or water treatment or water distribution, like we've mentioned. So one of the things we would like to do after we get all that done is do a comprehensive master plan for our, for all of those, to kind of get our arms around everything, and then. to kind of get our arms around everything, and then prioritize everything from top to bottom across divisions and across sectors of our utility. We'll, we'll take the opportunity to, to mention again, we did receive a four hundred thousand dollar ARPA pre-construction planning grant that we are kicking off, that, that project hopefully later this month. And we've got the funding in place, and we're ready to go. And y'all approved that for us a few months back to accept those grant funds. We talked about collection system master plan and overall, and then looking also at facilities and staffing. As we grow, we're going to have to have more staff for a growing system that, that staffing will require additional facilities to house them, equipment, as well as updating things as life cycles are reached.
Our service area continues to grow as well, so we're looking at locations. Also to continue to implement the adopted capital improvement program, which is also aligns with the city, the city's strategic plan. In addition, they evaluate staffing levels to ensure the ability to meet our growing service area. We're proposing to reclassify several vacant positions to address growth and changing needs within the department. Continue to invest in our employees involved, including training and compensation, and to attract and retain employees with purposeful intent to reduce our twenty-seven percent turnover rate. We had a lot of retirements and ongoing vacancy rate within the department. Now, this is a little too small to see, but this is, the areas in red are our vacancies and our reclassifications. And again, this is for information purposes. We'll be, we're working with city administration and HR on these reclassifications to focus in on one particular area. Jason can talk about a couple of our reclassified positions.
So in lieu of asking for new positions in next year's budget, we're proposing to reclassify existing vacancies that have been longstanding vacancies that we are unable to hire qualified people to fill. So in, in, in place of having someone to do the work, we're hiring people to coordinate the work for contractors to do the work. If you recall, you approved a contract a month or two ago for us to hire a contract crew to use city-owned equipment. We provide them the materials, we get them everything. They're basically embedded here, and they started working last week. And we're getting stuff done. So take those vacant positions, we can't feel, reclassify them to be project coordinator-type positions to make sure they, they're at the right project, they've got all the materials they need, that the equipment is, is functional and working. And so it's, so far it's working. It's, you know, trying to think outside the box on how, how to keep things going. In addition to that, we're asking for, to the two coordinator position, we're asking for an engineer specialist to help us with some plan review and just the deluge of requests we're getting from developers for, what can I build here? Where's water lines? Where's sewer lines? We're just, you know, just, just getting a lot of those requests right now. Another located position, we're required to mark our utilities. If you see the, the funny color paint on the ground, the blue's water and the green sewer, and that's what we care about, and that's what we're putting, we do that ourselves. Some people contract that out. We do that in-house. We have one position right now doing that, and it's hard to keep up. So we're asking to reclassify a position for another one of those.
So you have the money in the budget for?
Those are approved positions that are currently funded. We're just not, we're not writing anybody a check because there's nobody, nobody doing the work right now.
Right.
Mayor, this is something I compliment SRU and other departments on, where we're having trouble filling a position. There are other needs in the department, and it may be easier to fill a position. Let's look at reclassifying that position. And so these are some that Jason just went through, that SRU's working with HR, working with city manager's office to evaluate. And so it's not creating a new position, it's repurposing that position, hopefully filling a spot to meet the need.
We'll move on to our rate model review and update that Raftellus has helped us with.
Thank you. Just to start, I want to kind of set the table and provide a little context on the water wastewater industry in general. You are facing many of the same challenges that others. You are not alone by any means in, in what you're facing. There is aging on infrastructure everywhere, and there are utilities are facing challenges with that, you know, across the country. We're coming out of a high inflationary period. We also have, there's been a lot of money kind of pumped in to, for projects. So engineering costs, construction costs are all going up. We have pending regulatory requirements. The lead and copper rule, there's PFOS, you may have heard of those, but those are potentially going to cause additional costs to, to utilities in the coming years. We have declining per capita consumption, even though we're talking about some growth in Salisbury, and Jim mentioned that. That means there may be more accounts, but we're probably not going to be selling much more water. Every dishwasher you buy, every washing machine you buy uses less water than the one that it's replacing. So, and that's what we sell. I mean, that's, that's what, how we do it. So that's a challenge. And then just talking a little bit about the recruiting and keeping talented employees. I was actually at a conference earlier today with utilities from, from all over the country, and this was one thing we were talking about. Everyone's facing these challenges of filling their vacancies, and it's just really challenging for folks. So that's, that's the world that you're working in, that SRU is working in. So now a little bit of history about the rate model. The one that, that currently is using is, was developed over twenty years ago. I mentioned John Softly. I think he did it. I may have done a little bit of work on, with it back, back then. Since that time, Excel, it's, it's a, you know, Microsoft Excel-based model, there have been a lot of enhancements to it. It's a much more powerful tool than it was then. And so it's really time to, to upgrade it and take advantage of some of that. You saw the numbers that, that Jason went through and the capital plan and the, you know, from page and page of that. We need to be able to get that all in the model and be able to do some analysis on those, and also some scenarios on those, and it allows for that. So also, the, the model, and, and talking to Wade and Mark and Kaylee, they only really use it during the budget process. And they, they have some other analyses that they do, they're kind of offline. So you have kind of these one-off analyses on separate spreadsheets that can all be incorporated. And that's why I think SRU decided it was a time to really kind of upgrade and update the model. And this year, it really been kind of running in parallel, the old model with the new model, just to make sure that everything is, is smooth. But I think, I think everyone would agree that the, the new model gives a lot of additional capabilities to SRU and to city finance. And that's what kind of the benefits going to that. Really, it allows different scenarios. And I'll actually show a couple kind of really quickly of, of scenarios that we've, we've run. In theory, we could do it kind of in a council workshop, and we could pull up the model and be running things and changing rates, and you could kind of see how it affected various key financial indicators. So it's really nice. There's a dashboard with, with different charts showing, you know, various key things, whether it be debt service coverage, whether it be how your, your, kind of your change in, in your rates, whether it be, you know, capital funding and capital financing. And so it has the dashboard, and then also it can serve as a repository for historic information. So can look back and do trends and things like that with it. Mentioned dashboards. Here are some of the dashboards. The one in the upper left is operating expense, kind of a breakdown of, of the different expenses that make up revenue requirements, the largest of which is the operating expense, which is the black. These are the, the rate increases that are just being used in the model. And again, you can, we can change those and see the impacts. This is the parity debt coverage. It's very important. You have covenant, you've issued debt. You've covenanted that you will keep your debt coverage above a certain level. That level is, is that the kind of the, the more solid line down here. It's one point two. What most utilities do is they set a target of something higher than that. You can't set your budget and be right at one point two because there's too much risk that something will happen. Revenues won't come in as expected. There'll be an unexpected operating expense. So what we recommend, and I think what Salisbury's looking at, is kind of really trying to keep that at one point five oh. It's also very important for the rating agencies to see that you, you're doing that. And then the final chart I have is, is days cash, operating days cash on hand down here. You can see it's trending down, and that's intentional. Been able to build up cash. You're actually in a really good financial position right now. But Jason just talked about all those capital projects, and a lot of them are being funded out of cash. You see that, that's going down. That solid black line at the bottom is a hundred and eighty days of cash, and that's what, kind of targeting to make sure we stay. And as you can see, towards the end of the five-year forecast, and the model actually goes out more than five years, but we just kind of show it in five. It gets kind of, can't really trust what's out beyond that. It gets a little, little opaque, and you just don't know if that's really. So we really look at five years at a time, but you can see, you know, kind of bringing the cash down and then having it start to kind of stabilize at the very end of that, that five-year forecast. So those are dashboards under a certain scenario, and I'll show you the, the rate increases under that scenario. So there's a three point five percent. You'll hear more about that for this year, and that's, you know, I think what's going to be recommended, and that's what we're recommending at this point in time. With that, those dashboards were, were showing an eight percent increase next year, or for twenty twenty-six, three percent, five percent, and then two percent. So, so bouncing around a little bit, not optimal. We generally like to see if we can smooth the, the rate increases, but this is kind of a first run. And I know that, you know, in talking to Jim and Jason, kind of working on how we can smooth that out. But just wanted to show you those as kind of a first run with that. So what we did is we did, and this is kind of the, the beauty of the model, and we were able to do this in, in just a second. But you can change those, those varying rate increases to just four, four percent rate increases in twenty-six through twenty-nine. And then if you go to the next slide, it shows what the, the dashboard does. And you can see, it's a little bit hard, but that, the bottom two are really the important ones. This just shows that they're, but that's dropping below that, that dotted line. So you're getting a, a little bit weak on the parity debt coverage if, if you don't do the, the larger increase next year. Also, over the long term, those don't quite keep you above that a hundred and eighty days of cash, operating cash on hand. So, you know, right now, we, and, and we're not, and I know you just are going to approve one year rate increases, but I do, I think it's very important, and we do this for a lot of clients, is to look out into the future. You don't want to just do one thing and then have this, you know, wave that's going to crash over you and come in you. And, and that's one of the beauties of this model, so it doesn't let that happen. But I just wanted to show you, and again, we can just make changes, and it's, it's a dynamic model that does that. So it's, it's great to be able to do that. So coming out of that, recommendations really kind of twofold. One relates to the, the update in infrastructure. We are very much behind you doing that. You're targeting capital spending to at least match depreciation. I think that's very important. So, you know, you could, in theory, cut some of your capital to maybe limit the rate increase in the future. I think that would be risky, you're kind of, you know, eating your seed corn, so to speak, or however you want to say it. So I think what's, what's been proposed and what we recommend is you kind of, you follow that. The other thing is, we really need the three point five percent this year. That, that really should be the minimum to consider. You know, there was no increase last year. We're coming through a, a high inflationary period. You've just talked about the need for infrastructure spending, and if you, if you start to, the way that you get that down without having coverage impacts is, is you start to cut some of that, and that just risks you lagging behind and getting kind of caught behind the wave on, on your capital spending. And then the other thing is, you will not, you know, three point five, and I, and I asked around, you know, I gave you that list of all those utilities, and I don't, I don't work with all those utilities, but people I work with do. The majority of the increases are between four and twelve percent for those. A lot of seven, eight, six, seven, eight percent increases. And again, so at three point five percent, I'd say that's on the lower end. There was only one, I'm only aware of one utility that's not going to have an increase this year. That doesn't mean others won't eventually, but I think in, in North Carolina, kind of in the, in the region, and then, but a lot of, you know, upper single-digit or lower double-digit increases for a lot of reasons. So you will, that three point five will not, you know, jump you ahead of pieces, or other places. And, and I think, I do want to mention, kind of the final thing is, and, and Jim alluded to it, the one rate that you have, you are a true regional utility, and I think you ought to be commended for having done that. That's actually, I think, where there's more, there's momentum moving towards one more regionalization in the water wastewater industry, and also treating them as, and it may, maybe some time, and I think in, in Salisbury, there was some time where somebody, a new addition to the, the system may have to pay more in the short term because you're having to do some additional work as you take over a system. But trying to get them all to a single rate, I think, is the right way of looking at it, and really sets Salisbury up to benefit as, as the regionalization occurs, because you're, you're already set up as a regional utility. A lot of other utilities have high outside-city differentials. That's how they somewhat subsidize their inside-city customers. Problem is, when, when those areas get annexed, or if other things happen, you all of a sudden lose a, a lot of your revenue. So, and, and you're in, well protected from that. So I do want to, since, you know, Jim kind of mentioned, I do want to say that you, you've positioned yourself well with that, that one rate policy that you have. I think that's all I have.
And just to piggyback on the inflation, just real quick, the community, we always track ourselves. Every year we track our rates and kind of compares to the CPI of the urban south. And over the last five years, and I've, I've got the details here. Yeah, this is what the inflationary impacts have been, and you can notice our proposed rate increases, growth helps subsidize some of that. We were very careful in what we spent money on, too. We sort of trended that analysis. We did half the inflation in twenty twenty-two. We did no rate increase last year. And you know, the, the number that was announced a couple of weeks ago was three point seven percent of the twelve-month look back. And so that's one of the reasons we're sort of, we're forecasting and requesting city manager and I a three point five percent rate increase. The, also the utility rate increases, as Pfeifer was talking about, are also built in the rate models. You saw, we have the ability to change that through budget work sessions and see, do what-if scenarios. An, an average monthly residential bill for water and wastewater would be, for customers using four thousand gallons, the comparison we always use would be sixty-five dollars and twenty cents. That would be an increase of two dollars and twelve cents a month or seven cents a day. And I've got a comparison chart. Our rates still remain competitive compared to other utilities within our region. A little bit hard to see, but we'll have this. This will be in the budget message book and everything else. So you can see our, where we are between eleven and twelve is our, when we didn't raise rates, that was our rate that's current. And if we increased rates up to sixty-five twenty, we jump a few spots, but as Pfeifer mentioned, and, and also I've talked to some other utility directors. We, we don't mention names, but I do know there's one that's going, that's proposing a five and a half to six percent. There's also another one that's proposing a twenty percent increase on their base minimum, no volume, and ten percent on their volume for wastewater alone. So there are a lot of, there's a lot of pressures out there, and you saw some of those mandates that are coming down the pike. Just wrapping it kind of up, this is our proposed budget. It's a little over thirty-nine million dollars. And I like to talk about our, our budget really consists of three pieces. One, debt service, and you can see that's about thirteen percent of that amount. Capital expenditures and improvements, it's about seventeen percent. And we call everything else, that's our O and M budget. And breaking out our O and M expenses, you can see that personnel is only thirty percent of that. We, as Jason mentioned, we are contracting out a lot of services. There is some, some good things about that. You know, we're going to have more coordinators, but we're, we're getting, still getting the work done, maybe not with our own forces. You can see the other expenses we have, including the general fund transfer. And that was the end of my presentation. Be happy to, we, any of us will have to answer any questions you have. Again, this is for information only, for your consideration, and I will be back in front of you at a budget work session.
So I have a question. I remember in one of the budget presentations last year, you were concerned about our drop, not, I mean, our capital not keeping up with our depreciation. And that was a, an important factor in our overall financial evaluation in terms of how well we're doing. So can you kind of explain that again? Maybe I didn't do it.
So when, it's the benchmarking that was presented last year at the, at the Goals Retreat, and we were lagging a little bit behind reinvestment compared to depreciation. I think our annual depreciation is a little over five million a year right now. And so we've made a conscious effort to invest more than that. We asked, and you approved six and a half million out of fund balance last year on top of what we are able to fund capital projects with out of our, our normal operating budget. We're asking for six million on top of that next year, which is above that five percent. One of the other challenges when, when the benchmarking study was done was, we had not, and you can correct me if I'm misspeaking, we had not capitalized our big debt project that we'd done at the wastewater plant and the water plant yet. So once that hit the books, we should be on the opposite side of that, of that indicator. So we still feel pretty good about that, but we do know what, what those targets are, and we have consciously been reinvesting more.
So you're consciously working toward not getting that as, as, because I, I mean, for business, that would be very, very bad. You're not matching.
Or bond ratings. We did revenue bonds, and we do anticipate a few years, more projects together to do a similar type revenue bond.
Mayor, members of council, I'd just say, Mayor, thank you for that question. That's an important point. That's why we brought Bill Rivenbar from the School of Government to have that conversation. And we continue to invest in our system, and you saw the hundred and we continue to invest in our system, and you saw the 130-plus million over the past several years. But as Jason pointed out, we've come back to council, and thank you, you all have supported additional investment in our system to make sure our infrastructure is sound. I know that's something Raf Telus looks at, too, as part of the modeling study, and I don't know if you want to comment on that as well.
I think it is, as I said, very important that infrastructure focus on doing that. And it is not, again, you're not alone. Everyone has aging infrastructure, and it's a challenge. And I think, yeah, I agree, should be commended for, it sounds like, adding additional, and you know, devoting additional capital resources. We have the cash balances. Again, you're in a really good position financially, the utilities is, and let's use some of that to get those, that, the, the infrastructure.
The deferred maintenance up to our.
And we've been purposeful in adding to our inflow and infiltration rehab, waterline replacements. And again, we're contracting a lot of those out to get caught up, to be honest.
Even the project, excuse me, I was just going to say, even the project before this budget discussion was looking at our downtown lines and looking to improve and update them as part of our downtown streets.
If those are done, they'll be capitalized as well.
Right. So the 30 million, 31 million that we're going to spend on replacing that one.
Yeah, those are all outside funding sources.
Sources. But that will be capitalized, and that should help us with that.
And it'll extend the service life in a much safer location for many years to come.
Okay, thank you.
I've asked that question every single year, saying that the minimum capital reinvestment should be depreciation, because depreciation is based on the original cost. And we've got stuff that's 20, 30, 40, 50 years old.
100.
And we're not going to be able to replace it for the depreciation we're taking on. And so, I mean, I know in the business world, you know, you'll find organizations that require, you know, maintenance reserves or CapEx, you know, this inflation adjusted, because if you have that $100 million facility, and you set aside, you know, say it has a 40-year life, which is two and a half million bucks a year, just to use round numbers, you know, in 20 years, 10 years, 40 years, you're not going to be able to replace it for 100 million. It's going to cost you 300 million, 400 million. And so if your reserves are only equal to whatever the cost was 30 years ago, you're going to still hit the brick wall at some point. That's going to happen. And so, like I've said, I've always thought that it should be a minimum of that, because we had some years below the minimum, and I hope we stay ahead of that curve a little bit. And I had two other comments, if I may. One was, I thought this presentation was excellent. I wish it would be included in the materials. That's the kind of stuff, you know, that I dig into, and so I would like.
We're happy to send this out.
I would like to, seen it before, this presentation, just, and the, how many, we have, you said, how many employees do you have, Jim?
Eighty-nine employees.
So we've had a turnover, so you said turnover is 27%. So that means we've lost about 20-something employees, 22, 23 employees. Wow. The other thing is, I thought it was really interesting, when you were talking about, we have lower consumption per household, per person, you know, we have, you know, efficient.
And we've been able to monitor that with the smart meters, and so we were really dialed in on what our residential consumption is. And it is below 4,000. We use that as a, as an average.
And, but my point is, is, which is good, we have less waste. I had a bad month last month when my refrigerator line broke, and I couldn't get a plumber in, and so I was leaking 10 gallons an hour, and whatever the heck it was, for two weeks. So I filled up a few slimming pools. But the, it seems to me that one implication of that, however, is that if I use 4,000 gallons per month, and I buy new refrigerator, new dishwasher, new toilets, new showerheads, everything, and new faucets, and now go down to 3,500, you still need whatever I've been paying you every month. I see you grinning, you know where I'm going, because that means we're going to have to charge more per unit, because your costs, just because I'm using less water, doesn't mean the cost of your people, the cost of your replacement reserves, the cost of your maintenance is going to go down. So we're, we're going to face charging people more.
You're exactly right.
To maintain the facilities, and to maintain service and everything else.
That experience when there was drought in the area, and some areas mandatory reductions, then they did a, some others did a mandatory increase mid-year to make up that difference.
It's a challenge.
You saw that coming.
It's a very capital-intensive business, and so just because some, you get a little bit of savings on electricity and chemicals, but they're minor compared to the cost.
But I'm going to have to pay more per unit use, because, because I'm doing the right thing.
Yep.
But I think the efficiencies have kind of leveled off over the years.
And there becomes a point where, yeah, we're not going to, we still have a little ways to go, I think, coming down, but there's going, it's starting to, it's not like it was really 10 or 15 years ago, where we were seeing big drops in per capita consumption. We've kind of moderated it, but it's still going down some.
And there should be some offsets for the additional growth that we have also. So using the same basic overall system.
Yeah.
So, even though it may not be the same per.
I think we were projecting demand to be flat overall. You had more accounts, but less usage by accounts, but, so the growth is important. So you're fortunate you're a growing area. We do a lot of work, again, across the country. So you go to the Rust Belt areas where you have declining per capita consumption, and you have declining accounts, then you're in a real pickle. But fortunately, the growth is kind of helping to moderate things here.
And the City Manager Green, we are using partners, just like some of the other presentations. We're finding funding partners, and our developers are our partners as well.
Yes, I noticed that. I like that 636,000. That was really good.
Councilman Post, to kind of answer your questions, we actually do a lot of modeling on our piping, out in the distribution system, collection system. We can forecast what we need to spend over the life of an asset. So we have all of our, the age of each one of our assets, whether it's a section of sewer pipe, water pipe, manhole, whatever, we have all those in the model. And much like with the Raf Telus model, we can play around with what we need to spend every year for the lookout 100 years if we want to.
That's my point, but that, that's going to exceed depreciation. That was my point.
We can, so that takes into account inflation. So we can look, and so if you look at a CIP, some of our waterline replacement, what we're spending now, we bump that up every year. So in 20 years, it's going to be millions of dollars a year. Is that enough? So we can look at and play with that, and you can see we're either, over that 100-year span, the life of all those, and you can see when a lot of things were constructed and what their life is, you see a big need in 35, 40, 50 years, whatever it is, you can spread that out, and you can make sure we're putting enough into it now and in the future. We're either catching up, staying the same, or we start dipping below and getting behind on reinvestment.
I appreciate you explaining that. I mean, Flint, Michigan, it's, a lot of the analysis of Flint, Michigan after the fact has been, when they looked at their replacement reserves, they were having city council fights about water rate increases, and they weren't, they weren't even having capital expenditures equal. They were way, they were running like 25, 30% of their depreciation costs, and it caught up with them.
And we have a lot of checks and balances in North Carolina, which I'm proud of, and a lot of resources, too, like the School of Government, local government commission, too. And they're looking after non-viable utilities and regionalization, so we're part of those discussions as well.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Do you, you're not needing any kind of vote, just, yes, go ahead.
If I heard correctly, you said out of all the cities, one city didn't have to.
There's one, and.
What was that reason?
People haven't gone, and it's not official, so I can't really, one city that I've heard of is not going to ask for a rate increase this year.
Okay, now, okay, okay.
We're a little earlier this year, and one of the reasons we're doing this is so we can tell our client communities what a potential rate increase might be, so they could budget in their.
Budget in their budget.
Correct. So we're about a month earlier than when we approached you last year for that reason.
If I could just kind of summarize, if you could go to that last slide on the rate increases for the past few years and what's recommended for next year. And again, Council, we're not asking for action, but just want to make sure council understands where we are. You can see the rate increases for the past several years, including that recommendation which council approved of zero last year. If you remember, I recommended that based on the need to look at our rate model. We had used a rate model, but it needed to be updated, and we needed to hire someone with, to help us with that. And we were fortunately able to hire Raf Telus. You can see they're one of the leaders in the nation in doing rate analysis. They bring a lot of experience, but also are able to bring to us what other systems are doing, and ideas and suggestions. So over the past many months, a lot of work has gone into this rate analysis, and I think we're in a much better position. We have a very dynamic and user-friendly rate model now that we can use, not just during the budget, but during the year. And so, as was recommended, you can see for the budget for next year, at this point, we're building our budget with that recommended 3.5% increase. And our goal, and you could hear from Raf Telus, over the next several years, we know with the capital investment we need to make, with the operational increases, we're going to need to continue to evaluate and recommend rate increases over the next several years. Our goal is to have small and steady increases, and really manage those, and manage our investment. And I compliment SRU on what they've done in the past, and being able to effectively manage our system and manage those costs. We want to make sure we continue to do that. But you can see, that's where we would like to be, rather than the other model Raf Telus looked at, at an 8%, then it would dip down to a 4%, then a 5%. We want to try to manage that system for steady increases. So just want to make sure council is okay with us continuing to look at that 3.5%. And as Jim Beamer mentioned, our partners are asking, what are your increases going to be? They need to be able to project that as part of their budget. Last year at this time, we brought this to you. We were able to share with them. This year, we're not recommending any increase. We would like to share with them that our recommendation discussing with council this year is a 3.5%.
Thank you.
Thank you for that consideration.
Very much. Any other questions from council before we allow them to retire?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you for coming and sharing your expertise.
Thank you. Good job.
Jim, can you just make a note that next time something this heavy comes through that we get to see in advance?
Yes, sir. We're happy to do that, and we will share it. On some of these presentations, we're tweaking them until the last minute. We met as a team, included Wade yesterday, and we sent out things last night to review. So they're, but we will get, and this will come back as your budget presentation in May, you'll hear the 3.5% again, and if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Thank you. So now we're at number 17. Council to receive an update from Public Works on the request for an additional solid waste crew and collection vehicle and a proposed rate increase for July 1st, 2024, as part of the FY 2025 budget. Our presenter tonight is our Public Works Director, Chris Tester. Welcome, Chris.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members, for this opportunity to speak to you tonight on behalf of the Public Works Solid Waste Team. If you remember, back in our council retreat, we talked about collection points and establishing an industry standard for collection points. The industry standard for a single-arm collection truck is around 500 to 600 collection points on a five-hour route. That equates to about 100 to 125 cans per hour, or approximately two collection points per minute. In the city of Salisbury, our current collection rate is around 800 points per day per truck. We operate three single-arm garbage trucks and three collection routes. They operate on five-hour, they operate five, eight-hour shifts, so they're actually on route about five hours. So what we talked about there was the trucks, even though they're working eight-hour shifts, some of that's heading to the landfill, some of that's getting the truck prepared, some of that's fueling the truck, et cetera. So the actual collection time's around five hours. So they collect around 160 collection points per hour, which equates to about 20, which equates to one every 20 seconds. Currently, we're around 12,000 collection points. We had 150 added in 2023. We're projected to have 870, which are approved to be built in 2024. And as we talked with Concord during our council retreat, they recommend an additional truck and an additional route about every 1,000 collection points. Currently, our solid waste has some service challenges. The number one concern for us right now is our safety concern. With risk management assessments in collaboration with the League of Municipality, we show accident statistics are trending to a dangerous operation level, so that's a big concern. We have overtime hours trying to hit these collections and make sure that we get everybody's can collected on a day, and it has a lot of stress and impact on those drivers and on that team that are, that are working on those routes. It also has some impacts on other entities within the city, particularly the Fleet Division. Single-arm trucks are very high-maintenance trucks, and we're pushing them to their limits and causing higher failure rates, as well as downtime, which translates into a high demand for our fleet services. Also, we get a lot of calls with, in regards to collections and payments and bulky collection, and basically, field staff have to come out of the field sometimes to answer those calls. And we average, based on what our IT numbers are, around 208.5 calls per week. So remember, as we discussed, solid waste operates like an enterprise fund. Fees are to cover operational costs. Current fees and revenues, current fee revenues as well as operational costs are pretty close to a break-even point. Those fees generate around, the operational cost and the revenue is around $2.95 million, and there's about a 1% difference in revenue versus cost projections. Currently, our solid waste fees, you can see here what they are for residential and commercial. And you, we also noted that the last fee increase we had was in FY 21. So the recommendation that we'd like to make is to add an additional solid waste crew slash route. We would add one single-arm trash truck, one senior solid waste construction maintenance worker, that would be a CDL driver to drive the truck, fleet mechanic, based on the high demands of fleet and the addition needed for that department, a solid waste construction maintenance worker, and a solid waste customer service representative. Staff's recommendation to cover this additional cost, operational cost, is to increase the solid waste fee $2.29 per month, increase the recycling fee 48 cents per month, and no recommendation on landfill fee increase. So the recommended rates for FY 25 would be solid waste for residential at 11.57, recycling at 6.28. All those total would be 22.98. Commercial would be 13.95, and total would be 23.09. Any questions?
Okay, any questions or comments from council? We have to cover the cost.
I get sense if we don't do it, we're facing increased safety risks and just not getting the job done.
Yes, sir. Yeah, the safety risks are pretty extreme when you're operating them, 20 seconds per. Yes, sir. Yeah, the, the, the safety risks are, are pretty extreme when you're operating them 20 seconds per, per collection point. That's a very extremely fast route. You know, we do get a lot of calls of you're operating very fast. And yes, we, we are. It, it takes that to, to get those routes done in a day. And we'd like to decrease the, decrease that rate of collection to get back to a safe operation level. But still provide the level of service that we're providing.
We'll recover some of that in not paying time and a half. The over, I presume we pay time and a half for the overtime?
We do. Yes, sir.
It'll balance out.
It'll help.
Well, I think we should worry about the safety because nothing's more important than safety. Or the employees, I mean, their health and so.
We'll tell the public, we're not, we're going to skip a week every month or something like that. I mean, you know, communities have had to do that.
And Mayor, Mayor's counsel and Chris mentioned Concord. And this is one of the things, you remember, I wanted to go to Concord and they're growing. They're ahead of us on, on that growth chart. And they've had to add crews and address this. This is something we're having to look at now. But I go back, Councilmember Post, what you're saying, safety is the big concern. And we're seeing crews rush to get all the stops picked up. And it's leading to some accidents. So I think this additional crew is very important for safety, but to help us deal with growth.
If we've added 840 places, or that's what we're expecting, we need to plan for it.
That's in addition to the rate we're working at now.
Regular, what you're already doing.
You know, citizens can help with this. I mean, I live on a small street and yet I'll see somebody with, with their, you know, cans out in a car parked right, you know, a foot away, which means truck can't do it. So they've got to get somebody out of the truck, move the can, then use the arm to lift it up. Otherwise, they're going to, because the car is in the way. And so, I mean, citizens can do the right thing, face the can the right way, as opposed to the wrong way, and, and make sure there's space for the truck to operate.
It's a, a great point. And I know on our website, and we provide information trying to educate our customers. And we'll continue to do that. And it, it helps from a safety standpoint, but from a collection standpoint too. It's, if they can get in there and easily tip it and move on, it, it helps the route, the timing.
And Chris, this page is still up. That's the annual.
Excuse me?
That's the annual.
That's the monthly fee.
So those are going to go up 2298 a month?
No, not go up. That will be the total.
It'll be the total.
Yes, ma'am. If you add up 1157, 513, and 628, that's the total of that.
What is it going up? I guess, let's, let's see that number because right now it looks like you're showing that's what's.
We had a slide.
Yeah. It's 229 and 48 cents.
It's 277 per month.
If somebody's going to look in later, they're just going to see that slot up for a while. Yeah. So, thank you. Thank you.
On the recycling fee.
And it looks really expensive. So thank you.
On the recycling fee, last year, we had the budget eat it?
We did, yes, sir.
And so this year.
We had an increase of 50 cents.
Yeah. And, and last year, you told us it would be 50 cents per year. That's that second year, 50 cents roughly. Is, is the general budget going to have to eat last year's increase again? Or will this, are, are we in a position where the general fund isn't going to have to cover that cost?
The, the, basically by raising these, the, the 229 and the, and the 48 with the projections that I've worked with finance with, we will, our operation cost and our revenue will, will balance out. So to answer your question, yes, it still will be exorbitant in there. But we're balancing the operation cost and, and the revenue. We're not trying to ask for more than, you know, we're not trying to make money off of it. We're trying to, to balance what the costs are.
My, my concern was that, are we going to have to use the general fund revenues to supplement this like we did last year? And I hear you saying, no, we're not going to have to do that this year.
It should balance things out with these fee increases, yes, sir. Based off of the projections that we've worked through.
So are you needing, you need a decision tonight? This is just for information.
Come back to you through the budget.
Just to kind of, I guess, tell us and tell the public that this is what's going to be in the budget.
Yes, ma'am. This gives mayor and council a chance to think about and ask us any question. But it'll, it'll come back in May and this is what we're evaluating now. And so we didn't want any surprises for council or for the public.
For the public.
So same, just like on the SRU and that rate increase in stormwater last time.
And, and Jim, I, I think this is a question for you because I asked you to explain it to me. The difference in doing this versus a tax rate increase. Can you, can you explain why this makes more sense?
Sure. So on a, a fee like a solid waste fee, it, the, the folks that get that service are, are paying for that service. So you see the residential fee. If you're getting that residential solid waste you, service, you pay that fee. If we did a tax increase to cover the recommend, recommended fee increase, we could certainly do that. The issue is all of the property that pays that property tax may not be getting the solid waste services. They, they may be getting dumpster service not provided by the city of Salisbury. So in essence, the large businesses and industry would get a tax increase and they would help subsidize the residential solid waste service. So this fee increase is directed at those that actually benefit from the service. Does that help?
Yeah. Okay. Any other questions for Chris before we move on? Okay, thank you so much, Chris. We appreciate it.
Thanks for asking, Chris.
Yeah.
I mean, you're coming to ask for a whole new team.
Yep.
And that's a big ask. I think we understand that. But I think we all see that we, we need to really consider that. So thank you for asking.
Thank you.
It helps us to see what it's paying for and the public. Okay, we are now at number eighteen. Counsel to consider appointments in various boards and commissions. And Connie, I'm going to turn this over to you to help walk us through this, if you will, please.
Okay. Our first vacancy is on the Historic Preservation Commission. And you have one opening and Marcella Minza is willing to serve another term.
Okay, so is that coming to council as a motion then?
If, if council so pleases.
Okay. So we'll do that one first. Does, do I, is, can someone, yeah, can some?
Motion to add Marcella Minza to the membership of Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. Thank, we have a motion. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Our next vacancy is on the Housing Advisory Commission. Mr. Post, you're the liaison and there's a recommendation for Lisa Kelly.
So moved.
All right. So we have that as a motion on the table. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay.
Our next opening is on the Planning Board, Board of Adjustment. And there is a recommendation for a Stephen Rafa?
Rafa? Okay. And that's coming as a recommendation from staff?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So do I hear a motion from council?
So moved.
So moved. We have one. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I just mention the ETJ situation?
Yes.
I did talk to Tim and he's, he's been appointed, I think, to the Planning Board for the county. And so we didn't ask soon enough. And that, as our ETJ shrinks, among other things, this becomes more and more difficult. We've actually got two positions on Planning Board for ETJ, but.
But nobody deserves it.
But it's just really difficult to find somebody.
But I'm glad that Tim is going to be on the county Planning Board because they're going through their county planning right now. Very important. Okay.
He's not available.
Any others? Connie?
We have the Transportation Advisory Board and Councilmember Anthony Smith is the liaison.
Right. So that clarification on that about the writer. So what we want to do is add Hannah Adair, Dr. Orlando Lewis. Hannah Adair is connected in with Catawba. Dr. Orlando Lewis is connected in with Livingston. And also Donna Tillman would be the writer. So all three.
Okay. And that comes as a motion?
Yes, that's my motion.
So we have a motion. Do you want to list those one more time?
Sure. Hannah Adair, Dr. Orlando Lewis, and Donna Tillman as writer.
So those come as a motion. All those in favor, aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Any others?
That's it.
That's it. Thank you so much for your work, Connie. I appreciate you doing the research for us. And now, city man, I mean, city attorney's report?
I don't have anything from our report tonight, Madam Mayor.
City attorney, I mean, city manager's report?
Just, just to thank you, appreciate, Mayor and Council. Through these items. I know it was a long meeting, but a lot of progress, a lot of good things on the agenda tonight. So thank you for your patience and support. And thank you to all the work from the management team and city staff. Just real proud of the items on the agenda tonight.
Yes, thank you so much. They were very good. Counsel comments?
Just an update to the West End project. They have sent out notices to those applicants that actually received award. There were, not everybody who applied was able to get, get awarded or get accepted. But it was very appreciative. It was just, it was so many people and so much money. We actually only had limited for this first time around. So they tried to spread out as much money as possible to everyone, every organization. You'd have organizations start from June and some start in, in September. So there's a variety, a variety range of opportunities for that community.
Okay.
Are we going to get, are we going to be given a list of who got it?
Eventually, yes. As soon as they go through the process, it's still stuff.
So they're still working on it?
Just ensure that they want to do it. Then they still have to go through another process to get vetted to make sure.
Mayor, Mayor and Council, thank you for the update, council member. We are planning an update at your next council meeting. And Chief Smith and Chanel and I think some others will be here to update. Chief, is there anything you want to add to that?
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. I've been waiting all night to talk.
Oh, good.
Yes, the next council meeting on the sixteenth, we'll have our research partner here. We will have a Chanel, Gwen. Chanel is the coordinator for BCJI. And Gwen was brought on as a consultant. But we'll also, we'll give a brief history of where we've been, kind of the processes that have been, that have taken place. We will provide you with the budget. Then we will also provide you, and like you said, there was 42 applicants. And out of those 42 applicants, because of the small pool of money that's full around, only 23 were awarded. We will have the applicants that were, that were rewarded, awarded, not rewarded, awarded. And probably not the amounts that they were awarded because right off, it will have their business or the name of the organization and that they were awarded. And explain a little bit more detail about BCJI and where we see it going and some of the partnerships that we've made as far as the United Way that will be helping us with that. And some other partners that we've made along the way with that. So I'll give you a more in-depth update on the sixteenth. And the research partner will be here too, to assist us if there's any questions that I can't answer. The only thing I will say is I will be the messenger. I was really heavily involved in the first year. And that was just gathering environmental data and working with them. And then through promotions, I removed myself. So I've been away from BCJI for a year and a half. So over the next two weeks, I'm playing catch-up and I'm going to relay the message the best I can in two weeks. But I'm going to have support here to help answer any questions that you guys have.
Reason why, Chief would tell you eventually, that how it worked is a unique process. How it went from police department first in a community versus a community reached out to police departments.
Yeah, I'm going to leave with that. Don't, don't, don't blow that yet.
I know. So I'm going to leave it, I'm going to leave it for you to explain.
All right. Thank you.
This is the trailer for the movie.
Exactly.
That was your little teaser.
Well, thank you to Harry for all of your work in, throughout this process. We really appreciate it. Any other council comments before we move on?
I wanted to say a couple of things. First of all, sorry, DeeDee left because I wanted to just mention that, you know, she's gone two straight meetings without a comment and kind of gets us off on the wrong foot without her comments. And Clyde, thank you for yours. I mean, you always make us think and that's important. And I mean, you come at things differently and, and I, I'm grateful for it. And the other thing is, I was at Walgreens today and they have the Salisbury Opally game, the Monopoly game with Salisbury. For 20 bucks, you can get it on eBay for 70, something like that. But, you know, it's a great gift, you know, go buy and get yourself one of the, one of these things. It's got all the local stuff. It's even got Bell Tower green. So it's been updated since they first did it a few years ago.
I have my own copy of it. Yes, it's wonderful. I need to probably get it updated. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim?
Just, again, just thanks to SRU Department and the Main Street Downtown Project. When we look at that, I think Jason, you might have said that right. We don't want to peel back the pavement after we've made it nice downtown. So thank you guys for collaborating on these projects with the timing. It's, it might be painful, but it's going to be less painful in the long run. So thank you all for having that foresight to make sure we're seeing that and learning that from other places. And, and I wanted to thank Bailey, although she just left, for bringing out our new street sweeper. That's a huge investment for us, a smart investment, especially with the technology involved with that machine, how, how, how much difference it's going to make for our community, our neighborhoods. So Chris, please thank her for bringing that out and letting us kind of showcase it earlier today. We had the Community Appearance Commission, the Treeboard Awards last week in this room. It was fantastic. Thanks for all the staff, Jim, that you had here that were helping out. And it was just great to see different community members fellowship, meet one another and, and thank them for, for caring about Salisbury. So that was very nice to do. And then as a reminder, there is a litter sweep on April 13th. It starts at 8:30 in the morning over near the Walmart parking lot. So those roads over there, you can sign up if you're on social media. If you'll go, go look at the Sustainable Salisbury site, there's a place to sign up or you can show up. And I'm sure we can put you to work. So just wanted to send a reminder of that and thank you.
Thank you. And ditto. Last week was a wonderful event to showcase all of the Community Appearance Commission's awards and awardees. And there were a number of them. So thanks to everyone who won and all of the staff for all you do. And of course, Mayor Pro Tim is our council liaison to that group. And I just have two announcements. The Public Arts Commission invites artists of all ages and skill sets to submit their designs for the second Paint the Pavement project. There is no cost to enter and all materials will be supplied. A $200 stipend will be given to the artist upon completion. Entries will be accepted through Wednesday, May 1st. For more information, call 704-638-5235.
How many intersections?
It's the same intersections, four. And then there's a fifth one there at the Farmer's Market. But I think that one might actually be left because it's still in pretty good shape. It's in better shape than the other one.
I'd like to expand this one.
Yeah.
Get more intersections.
But it's, well, there. But it's, well, they're doing it because they only last for a year.
I'm with you.
I don't know if there's any update, or Hannah, any, anything on that project?
Yeah, I mean, it would be better to do it more places.
Linda was ready to get you.
Sure. Good evening again, Mayor, Members of Council. Yeah, so it was two years ago, I believe in June, that the, those crosswalks that are near the intersections of South Lee and Bank, sorry, no, that's the wrong area, South Lee and Carr, were, were painted. So they do need a little refresh. It was always intended that we would be, this would be a recurring project. So we are looking at those same five intersections, those same five crosswalks.
I'm just saying, expand it.
That would be great. We would love to.
We need more funding. So anybody have any ideas about donating for another project? That would be great.
Do you know what the cost is?
We can get it for you. I don't know if we, do we have that now, Hannah? The cost approximately for the five? I know that the stipend is a thousand, but then there's.
This is our wellness program.
I, I can tell you that we budgeted about $2,000 for this project, so it's a relatively low cost.
Does that include the stipend?
But it's all inclusive of all the materials and, and what it takes to carry on the event.
Yeah, $2,000. And, and the first one was funded by some individuals who got, who got a grant.
That's correct.
And put a grant together, yes.
It was a great pilot.
It was a great pilot. So any people who want to participate in the public, please think about it. And then applications are being accepted for neighborhood participation in the 2024 Blockwork Event, which is scheduled for Saturday, October 26th. The deadline to submit an application is May 1st. For more information, call 704-638-5235. So get your neighborhood together and apply for a couple of blocks. And could you come back? No, we're just kidding. We're not going to make you run the aisle one more time. And with that, unless there's any other comment from council members? Anthony, did you have anything? I kind of.
No, I'm going to say.
You're, you're okay. All right. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Anthony. All, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.